Good morning. We will call to order the May 8, 2018, meeting of the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners. At this point, it's my pleasure to invite Stan Bowling, our Community Development Director. He will lead us in the invocation. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Joseph Fletcher. And first, we will start with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders. Would everybody please rise?
Our Father in Heaven, we remember this morning that you're holy, that you are wholly different than we are, and yet your creation reflects your glory, and somehow, some way, we were created in your image. We thank you for that. We thank you this morning for life. We thank you for a fresh morning today. And we ask that you would move us closer to your image this morning. Thank you for providing the way to do that. We ask that you would give us your mind, give us your heart, give us your eyes, your ears, that we can be hands and feet for things that do your work here. We ask that for our board as they make decisions this morning, and really for all of us as we sometimes follow, sometimes lead today and the rest of this week. We just make ourselves available for you to shape us and work through us. And we lift this up in your name. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have a light crowd today, so let's kick it up as we pledge allegiance to the greatest nation on earth, the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Commissioners, are there any changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda?
Move approval.
We have a motion from Commissioner Fletcher, second from Commissioner Zork to accept the agenda as presented. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries five zero. Takes us to proclamations and presentations. We have a presentation of a proclamation designating the week of May 6 through May 12, 2018, as National Correctional Officers and Employees Week. And Vice Chairman Solari will be presenting this, and we have the sheriff and quite a few representatives from his office. So, good morning, Sheriff. Commissioner Solari.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Sheriff, gentlemen, thank you very much for coming today, and I'll take this opportunity to thank you for your work on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners. The citizens of Indian River County appreciate what you do. We know it's a very difficult job, and one that is clearly, as the proclamation alludes to, not getting any easier. So, thank you very much for that service which you provide. And saying that, I'm very happy to read this proclamation designating the week of May 6 through May 12, 2018, as National Correctional Officers and Employees Week. Whereas in 1984, President Ronald Raiken signed Proclamation 5187, creating National Correctional Officers Week. In 1996, the US Senate officially changed the name of the week to National Correctional Officers and Employees Week. The first full week of May is recognized as National Correctional Officers and Employees Week to honor the work of correctional officers and correctional personnel nationwide. National Correctional Officers and Employees Week has been declared as May 6 through 12, 2018. And whereas, Indian River County's staff of correctional officers, nurses, civilian correctional assistants, and support staff serve in an increasingly complex and demanding profession, and work in a correctional environment where they are called upon to fill simultaneously custodial, supervisory, and counseling roles. They're responsible for the custody, safety, and well-being of the inmates within Indian River County. And whereas, in today's profession, correctional officers and correctional personnel are well-trained, work under demanding circumstances, and face danger in their daily lives. And whereas, the work of correctional officers and correctional personnel comes with a huge responsibility to maintain public safety, as well as to help inmates develop the skills necessary to become productive members of society. And whereas, correctional officers and correctional personnel deserve or show support as we utilize this week to honor their hard work, professionalism, dedication, and courage throughout the performance of their demanding and often conflicting roles and efforts to protect public safety. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners, Indian River County, Florida, that the week of May 6 through May 12, 2018, be designated as National Correctional Officers and Employees Week in Indian River County, adopted this eighth day of May and signed by all five members of the Board of County Commissioners. Good morning, Sheriff. Thank you for coming today, and thank you for bringing a fine contingent of your correctional personnel.
Good morning, and thank you, Vice Chair. Solari, first of all and foremost, our thoughts and prayers are with our friends in Highlands County who lost a deputy sheriff that was shot Saturday, Sunday afternoon, and passed away yesterday. Deputy Gentry was 40 years of age on the law enforcement side, and it's all too common nowadays. Second of all, this is not only Correction Officer Week and Employees, as well as Nurses' Week. This morning at 10:00 AM, we'll be holding a funeral for one of our registered nurses who passed away last week. As you know, in the county jail, we have a full component, not only of a medical wing, among other things, but R. N. Stromberg was vital to our organization, served this county for over 14 years, and truly, truly, truly was a remarkable person, and we are going to miss her. Also tell you that, on average, we have about 475 inmates in our care and custody. Last year alone, we processed 5,500 inmates that came in, 5,500 inmates checked out, with an average stay of about 21 days. We have about 175 employees that work around the clock tirelessly over our 190,000 square feet facility, as many of you know and many of you have been there visiting. I'll tell you that these men and women often are unrecognized in the public scheme by virtue of working behind closed doors. But I will tell you, anybody that is arrested in this county, whether federal charges, state charges, local charges, juveniles are processed through Indian River County Sheriff's Office Correctional Facility. And these men and women do a fine job each and every day, and we appreciate this recognition. Thank you.
Sheriff, why don't you introduce the folks you have here with you?
Captain Adam Bailey, Major Selby Strickland, Captain James Hare, Sergeant Matt Zenzier, and Deputy Laura Saputa, who, believe it or not, was a deputy for many years, and now she is volunteering today as a reserve deputy, but her role is part of the mental health court that I'm sure you've heard, and she is also a mental health counselor. She's degreed in that, but in her spare time, she subs in as a reserve deputy sheriff. She was a deputy sheriff for many years, and her education led her to the Behavioral Health Center. So, we're proud that they're here. Unfortunately, it's a somber day for us as an agency that's hurting over R. N. Stromberg, but with anything, we will get over that, and we will overcome. So, thank you.
Very good. Commissioner?
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you.
This is just the start. Next week, we're gonna get good at it.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Solari. There are no minutes to approve, so we may move to informational items. We do have the wreath placement ceremony for fallen law enforcement officers. That'll be Monday, May 14, at 10:00 AM, on the steps of the courthouse, and all of the public is invited to attend that ceremony. Moving on to consent agenda, Commissioners, would anyone like to have an item pulled for further discussion?
Yes, Chairman, item H.
H, okay. Thank you. Chairman, item D. Item D, and then I would like to pull item F. So, we have H, D, and F pulled by the Commissioners. Is there anyone in the public that would like to have a consent agenda item pulled for additional discussion?
Move approval as amended.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Fletcher, second by Commissioner Adams. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes five zero. We will go to item H. Commissioner Zork.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in full support of this item, but just for a little bit of clarity for the public, and we do have someone here from the airport with us today, Eric Menjer. This will expand the scope of work from the 43rd Avenue and 60 to also include the design elements for the 43rd Avenue and 26th Street. And when we typically look at an intersection such as that, what's our... we don't obviously just do the intersection itself. We go a little bit each direction, whether it's 1,000 feet or 500 feet, or whatever it is, but what kind of scope of design will we... will this change order encompass?
Rich Berg, Public Works Director. The scope is gonna encompass probably about 750 feet north, south, and west. East is... excuse me, northeast and west. South is already taken care of as part of the 43rd and State Road 60 project. This is just going to allow us to build an intersection that we won't have to come back and touch in a later date. Turn lanes, left turn lanes all the way around, right turn lanes on north and south segments, and full signalized intersection.
Okay, great. Thank you for that information. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Zork, second by Commissioner Fletcher, to approve item 8H. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to comment on the motion before us? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. Commissioner Solari, item D, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This item is dealing with Jones Pier and the work that the county's gonna be doing on it. I just wanted to pull this because remarkably, at a city council meeting last week, one of the citizens who got up to speak about it on a different issue said that the Indian River County has done nothing to help restore the lagoon to health, which is amazing when I hear that. And my wife Jackie had, in the past week, been chatting with a gentleman from Cache K. who said, "Ah, the county's done nothing to help restore the lagoon to good health," despite what I believe are tremendous cutting-edge projects by Indian River County. And so, it's hard for us to get the work out. So, I want to use this as an opportunity to get the work out, first by mentioning, not only is this gonna take an old citrus grove, the uplands portion of the Jones Pier site, and make it usable for the citizens of Indian River County, but it's gonna have a small TMDL remediate... passive remediation system as part of it, as one of its components. And the initial designs for it, I just think, are tremendous. So, I'm not only happy that the Jones Pier project is going on, and that it will very well utilize that conservation area, but it has this TMDL aspect to... TMDL remediation aspect to it. And in addition, if you go to the Indian River County website right now, Spoonville Marsh is prominent on it, and there's a great video on Spoonville Marsh that's available to every citizen. So, I wish every citizen would just, you know, tell their friends and neighbors about some of the great projects that we have, Spoonville Marsh, Egrit Marsh, Osprey Acres, as well as a dozen other little projects, each of which help prevent polluted waters from either getting in the lagoon, or help remediate the situation after they get out. So, all that said, I wish the Parks Department great luck with Jones Pier. I can't wait to walk around the path that's gonna be on that area while looking at this quiet, beautiful wetlands, which is, as I walks peacefully through the grasses of Spoonville Marsh, is taking out pollutants on a minute-by-minute basis. So, with that, I'd be happy to move approval of this item, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Solari, second by Commissioner Fletcher, to approve consent agenda item D. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on the motion before us?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add one item if there's nobody from the public.
Commissioner Zork?
I think Commissioner Solari brings up a good point, that we do a lot of great things and projects for the lagoon, but you have to look through our website a little bit to kind of piece them together, and maybe we could have staff come up with a link and list, you know, what we've done in the last 10 years, or whatever the timeframe, we want to go back and put price tags with those, because when you add them all up, it's probably... when we get the new project on 53rd Street and 66th Avenue done, between capital cost, O and M, you're probably $75 to $100 million if you put everything in the pot, and that's just ballpark on the number. But I think we need a good clearinghouse, an easy place to find a list what we've done, because the public has a perception, sometimes we've not done anything, and it's because we've done it, but we need to do a better job of illustrating some of these projects that we've done, because not just Commissioner Solari, but all of us have fielded that question, what have we done, and having a central clearing place to post all those projects. And we can't have a link for everything on the homepage on page one, because eventually it becomes too full. Page one becomes five feet long. But, you know, just a better way of communicating our message, something maybe we could look at doing.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Zork. Any other discussion or comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. I had pulled item F. This deals with the lateral D Canal, which apparently is in the Sebastian River Improvement District, within their right-of-way, so my understanding is they own the canal. They don't maintain it, and so historically, over the years, on occasion, the... a private entity, the Corgan Ranch, has had to clean the canal, which is owned by the Sebastian River Improvement District, and the county has been participating in this with a 20% cost share. And so recently, I guess, the canal was cleaned again after Hurricane Irma, and as historically has been done, the Corgan Ranch has invoiced the county for 20% of the cost. And I guess my question or comment for Jason or Dylan is, if this canal is in the Sebastian River Improvement District right-of-way and owned by them, why is a private property owner, and why are we having to pay for the maintenance of it?
I think it is a good question, Mr. Chairman. We have recommended payment of this, as we have done in the past. I certainly don't like the idea that if a water control district or an improvement district that is supposed to do water control is not maintaining their facilities, that we would get involved. This has been a kind of a unique scenario where one of the private property owners, Corgan Ranch, goes in there and does this, and the county has cost shared in that. Particularly, the residents of Vera Lake Estates benefit from that, so it serves a function that helps our residents. But I think there is definitely a question in why the district isn't doing this. We'd be glad to follow up with them, or send them a letter asking that they maintain their canal.
Yeah, I think where I would like to be on this is I don't want to hold up the payment to the Corrigan's, because they've already put the money up front, and I don't... they're just trying to make sure their property doesn't get flooded, so I'm fine with moving forward with paying the invoice, but maybe either Jason, you, or Dylan could send a letter to the Sebastian Inlet... or Sebastian Improvement District and ask them, why are they not maintaining this canal that they own, and why does a private entity in the county have to pay for it?
I'd be glad to send a letter. I can work... we can work with the attorney's office on any legal items that need to be in there.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of this item, including the letter to the Sebastian River Improvement District, and in the letter, basically specifically asking if they could address the situation in the future.
Very good. We have a motion from Commissioner Solari, second by Commissioner Fletcher, to move forward with item F, with the addition of a letter to the Sebastian River Improvement District. Is there any discussion among the Commissioners? Anyone from the public wish to comment on the motion before us? Yes, sir, please, come on up. Good morning. If we could have your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Evan Esposito, 415 27th Drive, Vera Beach, Florida, 32968. The motion about the letter, I would like to address the fact that the county needs to support some type of protection for the Sebastian Inlet and the river. You know, as far as proceeds from taxpayers for that area, the beautification and the protection of wildlife, the county does need to cover some of the costs, so I just want to just bring that to everybody's attention.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to comment on the motion before us? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. Moving on, there's no constitutional officers items. That moves us to public items. We do have a public hearing, and this public hearing is a request by Mark Almater and Ian Plank for a special exception use approval for a private airstrip located between 130th Avenue Southwest and 138th Avenue Southwest, immediately north of the Indian River County-St. Lucie County line. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding. The parties to the proceeding are Indian River County and Mark Almater and Ian Plank, the applicants. At this point, Commissioners, I will ask if... for you to disclose if you've had any ex parte communications, site visits, or independent investigations, and we'll start with Commissioner Zork.
No, I have not.
Thank you. Commissioner Adams? I have none. Commissioner Solari?
None, sir.
And Commissioner Fletcher?
No, none that I'm aware of.
And Commissioner Fletcher, we'll come back to you. Can you confirm that you have an open mind and are able to base your decision on the evidence presented in applicable law?
I can and will.
Thank you. Commissioner Solari?
Can and will, sir.
And I can and will. Commissioner Adams?
Can and will.
And Commissioner Zork?
Can and will.
Thank you very much. At this point, I will open the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item, even if you're not sure if whether you're gonna speak or not, now would be the time to please stand, and we'll have the clerk swear in, all the witnesses collectively. Thank you. We will go ahead and start with the presentation by county staff and Mr. Stan Bowling, the Community Development Director. Welcome again, Stan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this is a special exception use request, and the process that a special exception request goes through is somewhat similar to a rezoning request. There are specific criteria and general criteria for compatibility and appropriateness that are applied by staff in reviewing a site plan, and ultimately, there's Board of County Commissioner decision to approve, approve with conditions, or deny the request. Like other special exceptions, this particular one has been through a public hearing, through the Planning and Zoning Commission. There's been notice to surrounding property owners, posting of sign, and advertisement in the newspaper for the P and Z hearing, and also for the hearing this morning. The particular site is actually... consists of two parcels owned by different property owners, but owners of adjacent properties. This site is remote. It's seven miles west of I-95 at the Indian River County-St. Lucie County line, and most of the tracts in this particular area are just under 40 acres, but many of them are actually much larger than 40 acres, and it is a remote site. In terms of contact to surrounding property owners, that's been done, again, for the Planning and Zoning Commission for this hearing. We've also contacted property owners in St. Lucie County and St. Lucie County staff, and at this time, we've had no objections from any of the parties with this particular proposal. This is an aerial of the site, again, two owners, Plank to the north and Almater to the south. You can see pretty much where the grass strip will be for the airstrip that's proposed, and really, the only structure in this whole area is the Almater property, basically a storage barn and office type of area. There's a number of groves, former groves, and other agricultural land, and range land as well, but no residents in this particular area. And this particular request, I think, has evolved over the years and gotten to where it's really a small-scale private strip use, really in sort of the center of this shared property here, well away from road boundaries to the east and to the west and other properties. And we don't get airstrip proposals very often, which is a good thing from a land use standpoint, because you tend to get nuisances cropping up, whether they're either surrounding property owners or the operators of the airport themselves complain about the complainers. So, we... this has kind of been through the wringer in terms of coming up with something that's a proper scale, but it is remote, and it does make sense, so staff does support this proposal with the conditions that are outlined in staff's report. Again, the airstrip itself that's proposed is centered on the shared property line between the applicants, and the thresholds are well away from the east and the west property boundaries. One other item that I think is very key in this, that staff encouraged and the applicants have done, is make this airstrip, which again is private, not open to the public, available to adjacent and surrounding property owners, so it can be... it can serve owners in the area itself. Just some shots of the site plan and the runway design itself. There was an FAA airspace analysis conducted and a determination issued by the FAA. They had no objection with certain conditions, which the operators will have to follow. This is a VFR, private use, windsock available from the air, no takeoff or landing when the strip is wet. Those are some of the conditions in the FAA determination. In terms of our process, if this is approved, before they actually commence the project, we'll need to receive a notice from DOT, and that notice would verify compliance with DOT and FAA requirements. In terms of compatibility, the airport... the airstrip, I'm sorry, that's being proposed, has limited operations as outlined in staff's report, no service or refueling area or facility, limiting the type of aircraft, and again, a reciprocal easement with adjacent property owners to allow use and participation. Staff's recommendation is that the board grant special exception approval for the private airstrip as proposed, with conditions outlined in the report, with limitations and conditions that are referenced here on this slide. Be glad to try to answer any questions that you all might have.
Commissioners, questions of staff? Commissioner Zork?
Yes, Stan, could you put the last page back up again? So, on the no service or refueling area facility, I could see why you wouldn't want any retail sales, in other words, customers flying in there for fuel, but it... being that far remotely located, to be able to have fuel for their own use or repair of their own plane, seems like that would be a more practical way to look at this, but no retail.
Right, and they certainly can... any users could have their own storage area, barn, whatever, and keep whatever they need for their own personal use in there, but there's not gonna be any kind of common fuel area or facility for this.
But is that... because if you read that, no service or refueling area, somebody could read that as if somebody had a gas tank out there, or, you know, or a gas buggy of some type that, well, you can't have that. Is that language, to me, that... somebody could read that and come up with a different conclusion?
Sure, where the intent is they will not have a fueling facility out there, if they have fuel in their own storage area, for whatever purposes, we wouldn't be regulating that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Stan, I have a question, and I don't know if it's you or the applicant, but is there any plan for like hangers, or any accessory use like that? And if so, would that also be special exemption for a hanger?
Right, good question. From a process standpoint, and I'm sure the applicant can address this, one of the applicants has a pretty large, about a 5,000 square foot storage barn area and office, and it's certainly this size plank craft they'll be using is could be kept in there. So, I would assume we would have, you know, what we typically have in these areas are larger storage barn areas for the ag operation. This would... those would be allowed as accessories. larger storage barn areas for the ag operation, this, those would be allowed as accessory uses, but again, there couldn't be a specifically designed repair or fueling facility. But they could have, certainly, they could have storage buildings that could house a private plane.
Very good. Commissioners, any other questions for staff? Okay, at this point, there'll be a presentation by the applicants, I don't know, Mr. Muller or... Good morning, welcome.
I'm Jonathan Barquette, I represent Mark Almater, the applicant, and we have nothing to add. We work closely with staff and we agree with all their recommendations and the conditions set forth in the memorandum. So with that, we would just answer any questions that you might have above and beyond what Mr. Bowling has already done.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions of the applicants?
No.
Seeing none? Okay.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll open up the input from the public. Is there any questions or comments from the public regarding this special exception application? Yes, sir, I don't believe you were sworn in before, so I'll have to ask the clerk to swear you in.
Good morning.
And if you could just give your name and address again for the record, please.
Evan Esposito, 415-27th Drive, Vero Beach, Florida, 32968, if I may. The FAA requires certain fines for dumping fuel, airborne fuel, exhaust fuel, and if you fly over residential property with this new airstrip, because it is, the perimeter is pretty close to residential property, I think that the FAA will fine you upwards of $30,000 per day if you discharge expended fuel over residential property, and it could create a noise problem as well with the airstrip. So we're worried about pollution and noise pollution as well. Just wanted to bring that to the council's attention.
Thank you, and Stan, you confirmed this location of seven miles west of Interstate 95 and pretty much surrounded by ag to land?
That's exactly right. There's no residential zoning within miles of this site, and it is large properties that are only agricultural use in this particular area.
But the planes have to fly over residential property to get to the strip, and I would ask that trees that are going to be removed for the strip, they account, maybe figure out a way to leave some of the ag, the trees, you know, in maybe the perimeter of the airstrip, this way they don't cut down everything.
Thank you, sir.
Now, the cross section of the design appears to be very similar to that of the aerodrome, and I believe that that isn't a residential area, I mean, that's why they reside there. And as far as any concerns about fuel, most of those facilities have gas ponies or tanks, and they just lug it out on a flatbed and take care of that. That will, is what we'll be doing at that location.
The applicants are, these are small planes, and they really aren't even here five or six months out of the year, so any refueling they do, if it's not from, as Mr. Bowling said, like a small gas can, it's not even done by flatbed. There's, it's more of a jump off point for the rest of their operations, and there's just no mechanical or refueling of any kind that really goes on out there. I've been out on site, and it's a big storage barn and a strip of grass and then nothing. There's no tall trees, there's no buildings or anything, so we won't even have to really be concerned with that at all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Final presentations, Stan, any final comments? Thank you. Any final comments from the applicants? Okay, at that point, I'll make sure the clerk has all the documents and evidences collected and preserved, and with that, close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I move staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Slary, second by Commissioner Fleischer, to approve staff recommendation. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Stan. No county administrator matters, we move to departmental matters, and Mike, it seems like this quarterly stuff comes around pretty frequently here, but it is time again for the quarterly budget report, and we will turn this over to our budget director, Michael Smikowski. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Michael Smikowski, Indian River County Budget Director. I'm here today to present the second quarterly report of fiscal year 2017 and 18. Overall, I'm happy to report revenues at a glance are, have been very strong this year, in particular, in the impact fee area. We have varying degrees of increases, revenue compared for the same period from last year, so gas taxes are up 8.2, sales tax, both optional and half cent are in the, above 6%. Impact fees are very strong, they're budgeted conservatively. Our tourist tax is doing well, in, due in part to the efforts of the clerk, and he's been aggressively auditing that, and that is paying dividends. And I'll talk about franchise fees in a little more detail, but those are up from last year In terms of the general fund, overall revenue reflects a positive variance of $7.1 million when compared to the same period last year, due primarily to tax roll growth and the increase in the millage that was approved in the current year budget, as well as transportation grants, which is a timing issue, that's $1.8 million, that's receipt of our transit grants. On the expense side, expenses have increased $1.7 million, and that's largely a function of constitutional officer budgets, $1.3 million, transfers out to other funds of $152,000, and then finally, as a result of the Children's Services Council, the increase in the allocation based on the board policy direction in this current year budget.
Michael, if you can just go back to the Children's Services?
Yes, sir.
I don't believe that we ever, we didn't pay out any funds to Castle?
We did not.
Okay, so does that get rolled back in, and is that reflected here?
In terms of the expense allocation, yes, it's reflective in the year-to-date, the year-to-date does not include any payments to Castle.
Okay, thank you.
In the MSTU, which is the unincorporated area of the county, revenues reflect a positive variance of $1.3 million, driven largely by ad valorem, due to tax roll growth, the electric utility franchise fee is up $282,000, and to varying degrees, revenue sharing and half cent sales tax have increased. In terms of transfers out, the big, the largest expenses in the unincorporated area are for transfers to the Transportation Fund and law enforcement for sheriff's road patrols, that increased. The Gifford Aquatic Center increased due to some capital work and building maintenance activities, and then finally, county planning has increased, there was an additional position compared to last year, as well as an increase in allocated GIS charges. The Transportation Fund, revenues have increased favorably from a year ago by $548,000, primarily due to operating transfers in from other funds, as well as insurance proceeds. On the expense side, road and bridge expenses increased $408,000, largely due to capital equipment, as well as salaries and benefits, and engineering is up, traffic engineering is down, and stormwater is down. You had one-time expenses in traffic engineering, as well as in stormwater associated with the aquatic plant study, and some contractual services associated with Osprey Marsh. Emergency Services District, overall, the revenue increased $3.1 million, driven by ad valorem, that was $2.9 million, driven, the millage rate increased last year, as well as property values, we did improve level of service by adding a new station, which was a driver in last year's budget, as well as advanced life support system revenues are increased, have increased about $179,000, those have done quite well this year. On the expense side, it's principally a function of salaries and benefits, you have a new station onboard, as well as about $800,000 worth of capital equipment expenses. In terms of the enterprise funds, the golf course is reflective of a gain of $736,000, that's less than it was last year. You had additional rain days this year, I know Mr. Nagy was interviewed in the paper recently, he talked about the wet weather and that it's tough to recover from in-season. We're now to the slower period of the summer golf season. SWID net income is very similar to a year ago. In utilities, water and sewer revenues are, the principal revenues are relatively flat, and expenses are down 2.8%, that's a reduction in R&amp;R expenses to date when compared to the previous year. Fleet is reflective of $117,000 gain, largely driven by fuel costs that's passed on to the user departments and heavy equipment maintenance. Obviously, that's offset parts, additional parts due to that equipment maintenance, as well as the fuel cost. And then finally, the shooting range is reflective of a loss similar to that of last year. We're hopeful net income will improve, the skeet and trap facility hasn't taken off like we had hoped to date, but revenues are up compared to last year. We will see, we hope, slow steady growth there, and we'll see summer if that, how the, while that is a slower period.
Yeah, just go back to that, and on the golf course, there has been some press lately about the profitability of a lot of municipal courses around the state and in our area, and I just want to highlight again that Sandridge has been profitable, and Jason, as far as, as long as I've been on the board, I think it's been profitable every year, and I think we have a long-term track record of profitability with Sandridge.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. The Sandridge Golf Course has stood alone on its own, has not taken any taxpayer support since I've been here, and I, and going back before then, so I've been here 20 years, and it operates on its own and with, without a subsidy from the general fund or from any taxpayer dollars, which I think is an excellent thing that we can say about it. The taxpayers aren't subsidizing that, never have, hopefully, we will continue on with that. There wasn't much coverage of that in that story, as you saw, it didn't seem to fit the narrative, they were talking about all these courses all over the state that were losing money, and most do, that's correct, but, you know, sometimes they don't like to talk about good news as much as they like to talk about bad news. So I think that point was missed, that our golf course is standing alone on its own, and I think is a model for others, for others to follow, but it is not supported by the taxpayers.
And just to add to that, I'd say, as a golfer, Sandridge is one of the best public courses around, it's well maintained, you know, recently, we just, we just purchased new golf carts, and so we're keeping up with the capital costs there, and so it is a shining gem that pays for itself, so I just want to make sure that we get that out there because of that recent article, but, and thanks to the staff out there, everybody works hard out there, and it's a, they also bring in a lot of tournaments, so it's an economic benefit for the rest of the county and the hotels and restaurants, and so they're just doing an outstanding job there, and I just wanted to make sure we emphasize that.
Building on your comment about the capital investment, too, it's important, I think, the course has done well, but we've also reinvested in the course in terms of capital investment, so it's not, the course hasn't required any general fund subsidy, but we have a whole slew of capital projects that have been deferred. We have been reinvesting regularly in that course and in the capital to keep it current as well, and we've still managed to not require a subsidy from taxpayers for that course, so I think that's an important.
Commissioner Slary?
I'd like to add a couple things, actually following up on Mike's, it's, we haven't deferred any capital expenses, but I think the important thing that some people wouldn't note, realize is the type of capital expenses. We've put the money into the irrigation system, the chairman pointed out, put the money into the golf course itself to make it a high-quality golf course, but we've also maintained expenses, which makes it a low-cost golf course, so that draws people in, and so while there's been a slight drop in usage, you should show it's not nearly as much as in other golf courses. But what we've avoided is things like the expensive clubhouse, the expensive ancillary facilities, which need tremendous upkeep and stuff, but which we don't have. So again, by focusing on actually the golf facility, the playing course, and maintaining that well while keeping all other costs very low, I think that's been the secret to that facility and the prime driver for its success.
The attraction is the course itself.
Sure.
Yes, ancillary amenities.
Thank you, Michael.
Now, we're going to turn to, we typically folk, highlights a specific area, the electric utility franchise fee, given the proposed sale that is marching along and heading toward conclusion. I thought that was important in how it's going to impact our budget as we move forward. Obviously, electric utility franchise fee is generated from the franchise rights that were granted to Florida Power and Light and City of Vero Beach Electric to utilize county roads, streets, rights of ways, to supply electricity and other electric-related services. That's in the unincorporated area of Indian River County. The FPL rate is 5.9%, the City of Vero Beach Electric franchise fee rate historically has been 6%, and those were through franchise agreements that were approved by the board with both of those entities. This chart just shows historical electric utility franchise fee revenue from FY12 to FY17, so you're roughly in the $7 million revenue range. This shows revenues growing from FY12 at about 6.4 million to about 7.1 in '16, and we had a slight blip last year, there was a, it was a much warmer winter season, and we had a drop-off in revenue, we closed at about $6.9 million in FY17.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one question? Mike, is that blended both the city and FPNL's franchise added together, or is that, that's both fees?
That's the total of FPL and City of Vero Electric combined, yes.
Oh, yes, the $7 million, yes, sir.
Right, and then next year, their gross billings for City of Vero is what, 200-something million, I think ballpark-ish, I'm not sure on the numbers, so if you applied that tenth of a point difference, it's going to equate to a revenue loss under that of some extended number? In other words, because it's going to drop to the FPNL rate for that 200 million, so that we're going to lose a tenth of a point on that revenue.
Using 200 million as the city's gross revenues?
Isn't it somewhere near that?
It's about 105, 110 million, 100 million.
Okay.
And that's important to note, that it's, that's... And that's important to note, that it's, that's the total amount of the city and we only receive franchise fees on the unincorporated amount. So we don't get the money for what's inside the City of Vero.
I got you.
Or Indian River shores, for that matter.
So then that actually could be an increase if you add those two back in? So if we're not getting a fee on the shore, no, the shores would get their own fee, correct?
Yeah, and they don't, as far, if I recall correctly, they don't have utility tax, so they don't collect anything on that. But we are anticipating a reduction in the franchise fees next year, assuming the sale is closed because of the, primarily because of the lower rates of FPL than City of Vero. And I think Mike's got a little more on that as we go here.
Okay, thanks.
So this slide shows electric utility franchise revenue collected this year. The first grouping is FPL. The second grouping in the middle is Vero Beach Electric. And then there is a, the very bottom is combined both FPL and Vero Beach Electric. So year-to-date revenue for the FPL, if you see the subtotal there, the percent change is about twelve point nine percent. I've got highlighted in bold the three hundred and fifty-four thousand in FY seventeen and the two ninety-four in December. You notice in FY eighteen, there are substantial increases compared to the previous year for both FPL and Vero Beach Electric. So we are seeing stronger revenues, more in keeping with what they have been. Last year was somewhat of an anomaly. Overall, though, electric utility franchise fees combined are doing quite well. Okay, so in terms of impact, projected electric utility savings by fund, we took a look at electric costs for county operations that are within the Vero Beach Electric service area. So you've got about a million eight in electric costs spread across five county funds. The general fund, the unincorporated, transportation, emergency services, and utilities. The differential in rates amounts to about twenty percent overall, which would be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings. Again, though, it's going to be spread and it shows the savings by fund, the material piece in the general fund due to the sheriff's sheriff's facilities, the main library, and facilities management. So two hundred and eighty-two thousand would accrue to the general fund. Relatively small piece in the unincorporated, and that's important, as I'll show you momentarily. The transportation is about twenty-eight thousand and about ten thousand fire within the ESD and utilities is about twenty-nine thousand dollars. So that's the spread of that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In terms of revenue loss, based on FY seventeen franchise fee revenue, which amounted to about two point seven million dollars, we would lose about five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in franchise fee revenue. Again, the differential is about twenty percent overall in rates. You would, this shows that electric utility expense, the savings where it falls by fund. The important thing to note here is while we do have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in estimated savings, it's spread across a number of funds, whereas the reduction in the franchise fee, because that's revenue only in the unincorporated area, is an MSTU revenue. So you will see the full revenue loss within the unincorporated area fund. So you see the net change or differential by fund, which incorporates both the estimated savings due to the lower rates with FPL and then the offset due to the reduction in franchise fees. So net, we'll lose a couple hundred thousand dollars. But that's important as we shape our budget for the upcoming year. With that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Michael. Commissioners, any questions or comments for staff?
Oh, what item that we probably should add to that? Currently, all the T and D facilities and lines and poles that are owned by City of Vero Beach Electric are non-taxable from a property tax standpoint, and those will shift, which would then hopefully close a good portion of that gap or even put us on the positive side, because those are fairly heavily taxable assets.
That won't hit for another year.
Right, that will be after, next year, correct?
Right, yeah. As Mike says, that will hit the following fiscal year, but I think Commissioner Zork makes an excellent point. Currently, those assets owned by the City of Vero are not taxable. They will become taxable when FPL owns them. We've been trying to determine what those values might be, but it's kind of hard to figure that information out. We've been working with the property appraisers office to see what value they have assigned to that stuff. But a lot of times, the focus isn't on non-taxable assets. I will say that Florida Power and Light is the single largest taxpayer in Indian River County, as it is in many counties. So we anticipate that we will get a significant boost next year in taxable value that will definitely close that gap significantly. So it's something that in the end, I think, will come pretty close to break even from the county organization's standpoint on this, on the sale. However, our residents and taxpayers and ratepayers will benefit substantially from the transaction.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Michael, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we have a special guest in the audience here who also has a very young family member with him that may not be quite enjoying our meeting here. With the board's permission, I'd like to go ahead and move my item up and take it now. Any objection to that? So we'll go to Commissioners Matters, item fourteen A one, and this is under my matters. And I think most of us, I don't know, Commissioner Adams, if you've had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Wiggins yet or not, but Joe Wiggins has been an advocate for the Oslo community for many, many years. And one of the things that Joe has always done is his big concern has always been the children in the Oslo community. And back when we were redoing a couple of the softball fields at Dick Bird South County Park and converting them to the lacrosse fields, Mr. Wiggins had concerns over, well, where can the children go just to play ball? Or, you know, throw a baseball around or kick a soccer ball? And so when we built the intergenerational building, one of the things that we added to that was immediately west of the IG building is a fairly large open field. And it's just an open field and it's there for anybody to go use. And again, the idea was that they can kick it around, kick a ball around, throw a baseball, frisbee, whatever they want to do. And so some folks from the community approached me with the idea that because of his advocacy for the community and his advocacy for the children of the community, that it would bring to the board for consideration if we want to name that open field Joe Wiggins Field to reflect the efforts that Mr. Wiggins has put into the community for years. It's my understanding that staff is already kind of referring it as Joe Wiggins Field, so it'll kind of fit right in with what we're doing there. Staff is in support of the idea. And so at this point, Commissioners, I'd just like to ask if the board would consider naming, we just want to keep it simple, just Joe Wiggins Field. If the board does approve this for the sign, I'd like to see it just Joe Wiggins Field, but underneath that maybe in quotes and cursive, you know, "for the children", because that was always Joe's quote whenever he came before us. So Commissioners, that's my proposal and certainly open up for any discussion or comments.
Ms. Chairman, you know, you mentioned, I don't know how many people are familiar with Joe and his quest. I can go back twenty years when I was a deputy and I could remember very clearly just that catchphrase that you just threw on the bottom, "for the children". Joe, I specifically remember good ninety and ninety-five degree days stopping by Joe's place and he had a little soda machine on the pool, near the pool area. And he always made sure that we had water, so you've got to keep hydrated, you've got to have a water. But he always brought up that the kids, the children, need a place they can just walk on, like an old sandlot. And they need a place to play that's not constrained, constricted, regulated. He just wanted to have a place where they can go up there with their bats and gloves and balls and just play ball. So I realize that you can't move that motion, but I'll be happy to do that for you with the understanding that we would direct the Public Works Department to construct the sign just the way you stated.
Very good, and I will second that motion. Any discussion, Commissioner Zork?
One, I see a hand up in the audience, but second, my kids and I, we go down there and we fly gliders and we do a lot of other great activities. Thanks to your persistence to making sure we finally got this done, it's a great asset to the whole complex down there. And thank you for holding our feet to the fire to get this done for the kids. Thank you.
And please come on up. And Joe, you want to come on up as well?
And I'll have to say, what a well-behaved little one.
My name's Felicia Wiggins and I would just like to say, on behalf of my father, he was more than an open field. He held you guys feet to the fire for many things, one including the park itself, also the IG Center. He was more than just an open field and it was all for the children because I remember being five and six years old, having people sign paper that I really didn't even understand what it was, to get the park there in the first place, just to even have a place to go and play in South County. So he's more than just an open field. He's education, he is mentoring, he is, let's keep them safe, let's keep them out of trouble for the kids. So I would just like to add that.
And perhaps I left a few things out. I served on, and we could have talked a few hours, because I served on the recreation, we had a recreation committee at one point, if you might recall. Joe didn't miss a meeting and Joe stood up and made sure that the kids counted. And he worked very hard diligently and was not a stranger to the phone, but he said, "Let me just come down." And he would come down to the old county administration building and he would go to the sheriff's office and he would talk about the challenges. He used to stop by the old cope station we had when I was in the sheriff's office, just to talk about the kids. So you're absolutely right. He was tireless and we appreciate every bit of his efforts and that's why the recognition is long overdue and we probably would not have had what we have without Joe.
I absolutely agree with that, so.
So thank you and thank you for that, but I just want to let you know that I just recanted one little cameo of where we were and what we did.
Joe, would you like to say a word?
Yes, I appreciate what you're doing and all the people that helped me to accomplish what's been done. And this was, one of my daughters was at the first ribbon cutting at the park when we first opened it. And now I got grandsons just ready to go out to the park and for a place to play. And the thing I want to really say is right now, our community has built up a whole lot, got a whole lot of habitat houses. They brought in a lot more children. And they need a place to go to stay out of trouble because if they don't have anything to do, they're going to find something to do. Most of the time, it's not going to be the right thing. So that's why I wanted a park and a place for the children to be able to go to have something to do, to stay out of trouble. And as a matter of fact, I was wanting to have a meeting with the sheriff to try to set up a program for them to bring children in after school or whatever, for them to be able to have something to look forward to, to stay out of trouble, to keep them filling up the prisons and stuff that's going on. Because right now, if they don't have anything to do, they're just going to walk the streets and they're going to do something that's undesirable. Also, I appreciate the memorial or whatever you're doing for me. But I still see there's a lot more work to be done to keep these children out of trouble. Mine, fortunately, they stayed on the right track and now I gotta worry about my grandsons doing the same thing, so thank you very much.
Joe, thank you very much for all you've done and I think this will move forward and once we have the sign ready and installed, we'll certainly get you and the community out there for the unveiling of the sign. So thank you for everything. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to speak?
Freddie Warfolk, forty-five ninety fifty-seventh Avenue. Just quickly, I just wanted to run a couple of things as you guys were talking. When people see this beautiful sign in the future, I want them to remember these following attributes that Mr. Joe Wiggins brought forth. When they see that Joe Wiggins sign, they'll realize that the term longevity was a part of his approach. He remembered that Rome was not built in a day and that some of the things we see today took many, 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 many years. I used to see Joe at the county commission chamber next door. He was just there, he was there. Here comes Joe again, he's there, he's there. And he was, so he understood that. He had that tenacity, that ability to be persistent, but yet a gentleman. He was able to give his case without badgering or beating up on anyone. He just continued to say his peace. He kind of reminded me of a Baptist preacher. He normally closed five or six times before he'd get to the end. He kept going back and forth, back and forth. Also, his focus, he didn't lose his focus, though sometime he didn't get what he wanted stated to come to fruition at first, but he never lost his focus. And his dedication, I love about his dedication, he was doing it not for himself. And that's the beauty about this sign going up. It wasn't about himself. He didn't look for any personal gain. And I watched this from a distance. Joe, you used to watch me, I watch you too. And I watched some of those qualities that he had. And finally, he was always pressing forward, pressing forward, knowing that one day this day will come to existence. As he said a few minutes ago, he hasn't reached where he wants to go. He's going to come back, y'all, and to make sure that those things for the children take place. So Joe, I just want to say congratulations. Keep up the good work. I'm watching you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Freddie. Go ahead, come on up.
I too would like to give praise to the county commission. I grew up idolizing Mr. Atlet Junior, Freddie, and Mr. Wiggins. And I always remember this Bible passage when this angel was wrestling with God and he said, "I'm not going to turn you loose until you bless me."
Thank you, Roger. Yes, sir.
Alfred Hart, six one seven nineteen Place Southwest, Vero Beach, Florida. I stand here today, Mr. Wiggins, on behalf of my father, Victor Hart. You know, he's not in the greatest of shape these days like yourself, but I wish Ms. Mary had been in this room here today because his wife, Ms. Mary, she, even when he was sick, he still would be talking about, see, I grew up at his house, so I know this man. would be talking about. See, I grew up at his house, yeah, so I, I, I know this man. He came to our house, and my father and him spent a lot of time together. And even when he was sick, he was still concerned about the children. And Ms. Mary would tell him to shut up. You just need to shut up and worry about your health, but he was focused on the children. And I liked when his daughter, I remember she was just a, a young girl, but she was always with her daddy, and, 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 and he'd say, "That's my baby." And, and, and she stood up here and says something very profound. He is just not a field. He's larger than a field. You're way larger than a field. My father, he got all the credit, but there were great people like Mr. Joe Wiggins that would come to the house and sit with my father and keep him informed on things so that when he did come before you guys, he, my father would be educated enough to be able to speak intelligent so that you would listen to him. Mr. Wiggins was one of those individuals that say, "I don't need all that, but I'm going to do it behind the scenes." He's done things with baseball, there are a lot of things you don't know about this man, but if you ever get to know him, and if he ever opened up to you, you would say, "He did all that?" And today I stand here to tell you, he did. So, when you put that sign up, make that J, make that O, make that E, because he deserves it. And God bless you, and God bless this community.
Thank you, Mr. Hart for your testimony. Anyone else from the public wish to comment? So, we have a motion from Commissioner Fletcher, second by myself, to formally name the open field adjacent to the intergenerational building as Joe Wiggins Field. In addition, when the sign goes up, there'll be a tagline below stating "for the children." And with that, Commissioners, all in favor, please signify with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously five zero. Mr. Wiggins, congratulations, and again, thank you for your service to the community. Commissioners, thank you for taking that item. I appreciate moving that forward. We now go back to departmental matters, G Utility Services, Van Antwerp Properties Draft Will Mitigation Plan and Award of Bid two zero one eight zero three eight. And I think we have Vincent Burke, Director of Utilities. Good morning, Vinnie.
For the record, Vincent Burke, Director of Utility Services. Um, going to go through a quick slide presentation. I'm not going to detail all the history, but, uh, long story short, the board may recall in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, the expansion of North County RO system that, uh, put in additional four skids. Uh, we had some testing that was done in two thousand twelve to ramp up those skids in order to produce clean drinking water for the, the county. In doing so, there were some effects on to a nearby property, an existing legal user known as the Van Antorps and their, their six parcels. Uh, I, I detail some of the ongoing efforts to, uh, not only do some testing, but also to work with the Van Antorps to bring us to, to where we are today. Certainly don't want to read all the information, the slides, but the Reader's Digest version is that this has been an ongoing process, um, to where we would like to, uh, bring this to fruition, which is being presented today with a number of options. But, uh, the board may recall in numbers six through eight more recently that, uh, we engaged the services of Kimley Horn Associates and their subcontractor, JLA. Uh, it's a hydrogeologist firm that, uh, came on site with the permission of the Van Antorps to collect some data. There had been, um, a lack of water quality and quantity data that we were working with to come up with the solutions, so JLA helped us to put some calibrated meters on to see what was going on at the Van Antwerp properties under certain pumping conditions. Uh, we did install a temporary rental pump on well number five. We'll show you that in Exhibit A here, which is on the western portion of the Van Antwerp properties. And more recently, um, in twenty seventeen, in November of this, of last year, uh, we engaged the services of Kimley Horn Associates to do the design and engineering and construction oversight services for the long-term solution. So, here's the Exhibit A, which is attached to the draft mitigation plan, which is, uh, the north on the, on the top part of the property. Uh, we are boarded on the west side with sixty-sixth Avenue on north by eighty-first. Uh, to the right of the red box is the Hobart North County RO Well Field. You see in front of you the six, um, wells, I'm sorry, the six parcels with some of the wells that are, um, delineated. Uh, in the center portion of the, uh, the map, you'll see well number six, which is the proposed well, which has not yet to be installed, but, which is part of the subject agenda item. Off on the east side of the property, you'll see existing wells number one and two. It's hard to read, but on the southern, uh, red boundary line, you'll see number well three, uh, and well four in the center part near the packing house. Again, at well number five, uh, there were some issues about artesian flow, so in the summer of two thousand seventeen, we enlisted the services MWI, Moving Waters, to put a centrifugal pump. We redid some, uh, piping so that they could either flow water artesianly, or they could turn the pump on and, and pull more water out for the planting season, uh, to do corn and to do a corn maze for some of the kids in and around Thanksgiving time. Uh, there was a heavy rain season and, uh, had some difficulty in, in trying to bring that crop to, to its yield, but, uh, certainly we have that well out there, uh, as a safeguard in case the Van Antorps need to have some additional water. We did look at some options. We threw those into the agenda item. I'll go over those real briefly. Uh, we looked at a side stream, which is to come off the manifold, which is a pressurized groundwater, uh, system that sends water to our reverse osmosis membranes at the water plant. In essence, we would both share the same water so that when we were pumping, uh, there would always be pressurized flow, uh, to run about two thousand linear feet, uh, west out to the property to a specific location. We'd share the water, but, uh, there were some cons associated with that option. There were some operational issues with, uh, the membranes having fluctuating water demands that, uh, certainly would cause some issues with the pressures. The RO systems like to have a static steady state operation, uh, but certainly there were some freeze protection issues and some other, um, uh, water issues that were of concern to staff. We looked at a quick fix with the potable water system, uh, to, um, have a side stream for irrigation purposes in addition to the consumptive use for the, just the domestic use in the packing house. From a capital standpoint, that was probably the least costly, but from, uh, some of the cons that we looked at, it was not the best use of potable water and certainly went against Indian River County's conservation efforts as well as the district. We had, we had briefly looked at reuse just because we have a reuse main on, uh, fifty-eighth Avenue. There's a heavy cost associated with that. It's not a pressurized flow. There's intermittent pressures. Uh, there's a perception issue with, uh, using, uh, reuse to irrigate. There is a high cost, uh, in order to run that line out to the subject property. And, uh, one of the commissioners, last time we had asked, uh, wanted to know if, uh, we could certainly buy the property of about twenty-nine acres. Uh, we reached out through the district to entertain, uh, an offer of purchase based on the right-of-way acquisition, which came, uh, just over twenty-two thousand, close to point nine nine acres, uh, as it's kind of like a starting point. Uh, but, uh, that offer was, um, verbally rejected as, uh, too low. We had then extrapolated that out for an entire, uh, purchase of all the acres based on the, um, the, uh, the, the, the site survey and the, the estimated cost, but, uh, that certainly was not entertained by the Van Antorps with the offer of the estimated costs, extrapolating out the, uh, the appraised value for the entire property. Just over six hundred and forty thousand dollars was at least, uh, too low of a starting point. So, secondary to that, uh, staff had looked at, uh, whether or not there could be a public use of that property, uh, either for the utilities or for Public Works, uh, for some storage, drainage, for roadway improvements. And we were told that Public Works, uh, as part of the sixty-sixth Avenue, uh, road widening did not need the subject property for any stormwater or, uh, driver retention area. So, we did, uh, look at a final option, which was a submersible well option, uh, submersible pump rather, uh, onto a well. And it consists, we're just on some of the highlights here of furnishing a new well number six, as shown on Exhibit A, for agro, agricultural use, which will be permitted through the district. Um, it'll be equipped with a submersible pump. There'll be a new electric panel installed to the NEC code, new concrete well pad, uh, electric service and, and such to basically be a turnkey operation for use at that particular area. Uh, there would also be a retrofit of existing well number one. You recall that's on the east side of the Van Antwerp properties, but it's closest to the, uh, county's well field. Uh, so well one would be, uh, video logged to make sure that the casing was in good shape. Uh, that was installed by others, I believe, in two thousand and five. Uh, and if the casing was in good shape and everything looked plumb to the line, then we would be able to, um, drop a submersible pump into that area, and, uh, a new wellhead would be provided as part of that solution as well. And, uh, there'd be some annual ongoing maintenance costs that the county would be responsible for, the utility department, for both well number six and well number one. The concern by the Van Antorps in the past, uh, of not having a submersible well was the cost of renting a lift to remove that. That issue has been taken care of by transferring that onus on to the utility department. And so, it's not part of the approval today, which we will still have to do at some future time, is we will have to then solicit a well contractor, perhaps locally, perhaps the one that's, um, being recommended to move forward, to do annual ongoing maintenance, to make sure the conductors are okay, to make sure the well's pumping and, and that system is, is up and running. There's also some, uh, shelf parts that we would need to have. Uh, the proposed solution is a non-special order. In other words, these are shelf parts. The Grunfoss two horsepower pumps are readily available. Uh, the lead time would not be long, so hypothetically speaking, if one of these pumps, uh, did go down, we'd have a shelf part to go out there and quickly, uh, replace that, uh, um, and, and get Mr. Van Antwerp, uh, back in business. And also to continue to provide county water, which has been provided since two thousand twelve, but, uh, we've only for some reason only been capturing some of the consumptive use since two thousand fourteen. So, we asked, uh, itemized some of the costs. We broke it down into three, uh, distinct areas. The costs incurred to date, uh, some of the costs that we're proposing as part of the solution, and then, uh, hypothetical costs that we may have in the future. Without going into a lot of detail, as shown in the backup, uh, to date, some of the costs are close to about ninety thousand dollars. You'll see two asterisks on the bottom portion of the screen. Uh, those are costs that hypothetically would have been charged but have not been charged to the Van Antorps, uh, just, uh, over seventeen thousand dollars plus or minus. Um, but certainly we've, um, extended the water line. We've, uh, rented a pump. We've hired, uh, some, some professionals to assist us in our effort, uh, and those costs, again, are close to about ninety thousand dollars to date. Uh, the costs required by Indian River County for the accepted or proposed solution would be, um, the forty-four thousand six hundred and eight dollars, which has already been approved by the board previously to hire, uh, Kimley Horn Associates to, again, design, engineer, permit, and, uh, do the construction oversight of the well contractor, uh, and then the well construction of a hundred and seven thousand and change for a total of about a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And then, lastly, the future cost based on a ten-year projection. Uh, certainly this, um, plan could go longer than ten years, but we just picked a ten-year, uh, timeframe just for illustration purposes. Uh, we would continue to, to have the well number five pump in place until, uh, the new wells are, are up and running, and so we estimate that to be about six months, just over eight thousand dollars. Uh, we estimate the operation maintenance of about five thousand dollars a year. It could be less than that if no pump is, uh, needing to be replaced, but if we do have to replace one or two pumps in any given year, it could be, uh, over that amount. So, we estimate it about five thousand dollars a year. And then we, um, looked at the potable water consumption, which would continue at the three domestic structures, uh, and, uh, the packing house of just close to sixteen thousand. So, in grand total, uh, it's just over three hundred and twelve thousand dollars, almost three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars for this proposed plan. So, we worked with purchasing, and Indian River County Department Utility Services worked with purchasing to put the bids out. Once they were designed by Kimley Horn Associates, the bids were opened after, there was a mandatory pre-bid on the property. Um, I want to thank Jennifer Hyde, who's very, uh, very detail oriented and helped us during this process, and with her staff, um, collected and opened the bids on February twenty-eighth of two thousand eighteen at two o'clock PM. In total, three bids were received. Of the three, uh, one bidder was disqualified for not producing, uh, the required information. And you'll see in front of you the two bids that were submitted. All Web's Enterprises was the lowest, and then Applied Drilling was, uh, the second bid received. So, staff is here to recommend today to approve. Certainly, uh, the board can make any changes, but we warn the board that the approved plan that staff is recommending today has been, uh, vetted and approved by staff, has been vetted and approved by the district, and has been, uh, approved by the Van Antorps, as attached in the documentation. I believe it's attachment number six. So, staff would recommend, uh, keeping the draft mitigation plan as proposed. Certainly looking for the board to authorize staff to continue providing potable water at note cost, as stipulated in the draft mitigation plan, in lieu of the Indian River County Code of Ordinance, section two ten point two zero, which, uh, states that there shall be no free service due to the unique and, uh, very special nature of the Van Antwerp properties with respect to the consumptive use permit and the condition requirements. We certainly would support staff, uh, to be able to provide that, uh, potable water now into the future. We also would like the board to direct staff to cover the water impact fees of six ERUs. There's one ERU per each of the domestic structures, and then three ERUs that would be attached to the packing house for a total of six. And the associated connection costs, including, uh, meter fees and deposits, comes to eight thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. Uh, in the future, at some point, if the property is sold or there's a change in use, we would then obviously charge the new users that fee, and then, in essence, reimburse the utility operating fund. So, actuarially, we'll be making, uh, ways to be able to, to track those, those costs now and then, uh, hypothetically in the future. And last but not least, staff recommends, uh, the board award bid number two zero one eight zero three eight to All Web's Enterprises in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand dollars, uh, one hundred and forty dollars, one hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, excuse me. I must note that has a ten percent contingency in there. The opinion probable cost was just over ninety-five thousand from Kimley Horn. Uh, but anytime you have existing wells that were built by others, there's always an unknown, so there's a ten percent contingency force account. Not to say that we would use that, but certainly we want to include that amount in case the well contractor, uh, enters into any, uh, unknowns or unforeseen issues while on the subject property. Certainly available for any questions that the board may have of staff at this time.
Thank you. Vinnie, Commissioners, any questions of Vinnie or Jennifer Hyde? Uh, start with Commissioner Flora, then Commissioner Fletcher.
I've got one. It's, uh, it's a little bit picky. It's on the impact fees. Just to be clear, uh, the impact fees will be paid out of the operating fund from the utility department.
That's correct.
Uh, but it, in the backup, it says that the, uh, new, well, the agreement terminates when the property is no longer used agriculturally, when there's a change in zoning.
It's the, the change in the use of the water that's on there right now. So, right now, the use and the users are protected for agricultural purposes only, hypothetically saying if somebody comes in there and opens up a, a parking lot, say, that would be a change of use and that would no longer be used for agri-
But they need a change in zoning, so basically it's treated by the ch, change of zoning, so. But at some point, the use is, is different. So, uh, it, it says that the new owner with the new change of use would be required to reimburse Indian River County Utility Department.
If they choose to have county water, yes.
Yeah, but I think it'd be, but you have that choice, so it could be, the ERU, my point is the ERUs could be sort of suspended and become phantom ERUs for, for a period of time. So, I'm going to suggest that we authorize, uh, the board of county commission authorizes the utility department to basically just purchase them back. So, and it basically is just a bookkeeping entry, but it takes care of the idea of that there are phantom ERUs out there, which may or, may not be reimbursed five years, ten years, fifteen years later. So, I just think it's just a little bit cleaner. So, I'd prefer, prefer if we do it that way, if the county administrator has no objection. And then, you mentioned deposits, uh, as, as part of that fee, if I'm correct. Would there actually be deposits?
Yeah, I mean, we just, we just wanted to illustrate the, the connection costs associated on top of-
Yeah, well, so if there are deposits, I mean, you give a deposit to yourself, which-
Right.
So, I, just to make that transfer a little bit different and cleaner, I, I don't think there'd be a need for the deposits, or none that I can see, so.
We, we typically would not put a deposit on the account like such as this.
Okay, so I mean, so there are no deposits and, and-
It was just for illustration purposes to show what a regular customer would pay, so to speak.
Okay, so I, so as long as it's, yeah, I just didn't want the bookkeeping entry to move from the one operating fund to the i, impact fee fund for no particular reason. So, with those two changes, uh, I'm happy to move them, move the staff recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, second, uh, with the-
Under discussion, Commissioner Fletcher?
You know, um, I, Mr. Burke, I, I just want to say thank you. It's been a long couple of years. I rode the path and pasture, uh, with Mr. Burke, and, uh, it's, it's been a difficult one. I believe you gave a very great, uh, a, a good account of the, uh, process, but, uh, it was still Reader's Digest, and I saw the pain as, as you were going forward. So, um, we'll notice that there, uh, the room is not abundant with, uh, Van Antorps as they are at the family farm overseeing and, and working at one of the very last of the family farms that are in existence in Indian River County, and I think they'll be happy to know that they will not be suffering the, uh, subsequent drawdowns that they've had to endure for over the years. And, uh, I just want to say thank you to Vinnie and the staff for getting through this process.
It was a team effort, and I'd like to obviously thank the district staff, who's been very helpful, and the Van Antorps as well. So, um, certainly a team effort to get, um, everybody together to come up with this proposed solution.
Thank you.
Any other comments from Commissioners? We have a motion from- We have a motion from Commissioner Slory, second by Commissioner Fleischer, to approve the draft well mitigation plan and award of the bid. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on the motion before us? Seeing none, on favor signify with aye. Any opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Commissioners, it's just about 10:30. We'll go ahead and take a 10-minute break. We'll be back here at 10:40.
I can tell you what.
Oh, you did? Okay. Goodbye.
Peter has to start.
I know.
Call the meeting back to order. We have completed departmental matters. We now move on to the county attorney matters, item A, Economic Development Council membership. Mr. Reinhold.
My turn.
We have a motion from Commissioner Slory. I'll give this to Commissioner Adams for the second. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on the motion before us? And just for the record, this is changing the citrus representative to a agricultural representative. Seeing no public discussion, on favor signify with aye. Any opposed? That carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Reinhold.
Brilliant presentation.
So we move to commissioners' matters. We've already completed my matters, so that takes us to item E, Commissioner Tim Zork, tourist development tax. Mr. Zork, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to pass to my right, the clerk already has one, is the latest version of a PowerPoint. I was working, I was waiting to get some additional numbers in that we waited for, and threw Mike Smikowski in budget, but we did not get them as of yesterday, so we completed the package. And I have a few extras up here for afterwards, but it'll be the same as what's on the screen. Part of why I brought this up today, this is not just something that came about, met with Eric at the airport a number of months ago, and speaking with some other folks in the community. Locally, the county commission sets the policy of the pennies that we have that we allocate. Was originally adopted back in 1987, I believe is when the county adopted locally and in the backup online, is the, what was a much shorter items that governed the authorized use of the revenue. You only had about six items that you could use the items on. Then going forward, in 2000, the county changed the language, allowing for additional uses of revenue that I believe went towards the Dodger Town purchase time period. So over the last 18 years, on the backup, if you look at the Florida statute, use of revenues, it's now gone from a half of one page to three full pages of additional types of uses of revenue. Some may be things that would just never, ever happen here. But there are some things that could happen here. So as we're going to go through the PowerPoint, what I wanted to do is just have a general discussion on, do we want to consider mirroring, as we did originally in 1985, what the official use of revenue was from the state? Do we want to look at considering adopting that? Secondly, taking the total money, what I call the unencumbered funds, because we have beach restoration, which I look at as encumbered, and the one cent for Dodger Town purchase, that money's encumbered, is the flexible money that gets allocated out to the different groups is apply, one, a reserve concept to the funds, a dedicated passenger aviation portion to the airport. And I will say that Eric Mendry is here in the audience today, and they have submitted a completed application that will be visited next week and discussed at next Wednesday's May 16 meeting. So let's go through the slides. You want to just click them and I'll, or do I have a clicky up here? Okay. So as we all know, this is how the different pennies are collected. We have one and a half cents goes for tourist development agencies, which I, what I'm going to call the unencumbered amounts. That money is then divided up against the different agencies that are listed. We have one and a half pennies for beach restoration and one cent for the Dodger Town debt service purchase, which has about three or four years roughly left on that. This is just a distribution chart. Go on to the next slide. So I had mentioned that we currently, we look at the money that we have, and we basically disperse virtually all that money each year, which is what they're commissioned to do. So this would be proposing some changes with that. Again, 80% would go to the same type of agencies that are applied. Obviously, this would change if the Vero Beach Airport number is provided for. I see that as a growing need, so I had listed it as 5% or $75,000, which is ever greater going forward, to promote and advertise tourism for people from the areas that are served by whatever air carriers we have at the airport, to try to get them to come to our marketplace and put heads on beds. Of the new items that are added, that have been added over the last 18 years by the legislature, if we adopted the current use of revenue language that the state has, those new uses that we would add would be capped at 10% of the one and a half cents that we collect on that. You could go wild with some of the things on that list, so the thought was if we did add them all, I would like to propose a cap of 10% on the new items that we would have. And lastly, 5% would be for a reserve fund that, once you maintain a 10% reserve of the prior year's unencumbered operating budget, then that 5% would roll up into the other expense categories. I think currently, because we've been collecting more than we appropriate the prior years, we probably have somewhat of a trailing reserve by default because of the way the money comes in. But having an official policy, I think, on reserves that would be within the legislatures, they don't get into the weeds too much on reserve funds, but I think a 10% would be a minimum amount you'd like to see. If we have a, as the Keys did after the hurricane came through, they did a very aggressive campaign. The Keys is open for business, all the Keys is not closed. You know, so having a contingency reserve fund for those types of issues, which we do know come up in our area, unfortunately, but having something, say you have additional money that you can use to promote our community during that time. All right, next slide. And go to the next one. So again, if we did add these additional uses in there, how they would fit into the overall, I know Commissioner Slory, if I put these in a spreadsheet, they might be a little bit more appealing.
Definitely easier to understand.
Right. Next slide. Fortunately for our area, through the efforts of, through the local chambers, as well as some of the great hotel partners that we have in the community that spend, we have one in the room, Keith Kite that's here, you know, his hotel group spends a lot of their money on marketing, as well as some of the great properties that we have in the community. And through that cooperative effort and a growing economy that we have, as well as venues and activities and things that people want to come to Florida for, this has been a definitely a growing number. Now I have to also do a shout out to the Sports Commission. You know, their 20,000-plus room nights a year definitely puts a big plus side into this revenue column. Next slide. So originally, I was holding out to try to see if we could get the April numbers to see, but currently, year-to-date, we're at 17%. I know Mike had mentioned earlier during his budget update, we're up 13%. So 13 or 17, whichever happens to be the right number. But we're, you know, we're very fortunate. We also have some new properties coming online, hopefully over the next year, that'll help continue to grow, to continue to grow these numbers. Next slide. And this is our year-to-date funds, kind of a snapshot of where we stand. Things are looking very healthy compared to what we budgeted along last year. And that is the completion of the slide presentation. If you shift back to in the agenda item, the 2018, what's on the books with the Florida Legislature now under authorized use of revenue, this would open up additional expense categories that if we did establish a certain portion of dollars, TDC dollars, to be set aside for these new uses, those new uses would have a competitive bidding process or scoring process that the TDC group would then evaluate and decide how they would want to award. But if you used a million dollars of unencumbered money, and you said 10% went to the new uses, you have basically a $100,000 pot that could go towards these additional uses that would then be, whether it's, there's two groups talking about some museum-type facilities here in Vero that would be drivers to bring people into local economy. There's just a host of other uses. Again, some we would never venture into. Some of the new uses also are tied into the BP oil spill fund expenditures that are unique kind of to the Panhandle and the West Coast that don't affect us. But so a two-part question. One, do we want to look at expanding our use of revenues? Question mark. There are, I think, some good ones on that list that could be used to help our local community and broaden the things that we support. And then any change to that would require a change to our comp plan, where we, where the commission decides how the money would be divided up or expensed, or if we'll put brackets, our expenditures on it, as well as the proposal of an official reserve fund that would go with the TDC dollars that would be held in the event of a special need that would arise, you know, during a year, an unexpected event such as a hurricane or other event that we would want to let the rest of the tourism industry know, hey, that may have affected Florida, but we're open for business, such as what I'm sure Hawaii's going through at the volcano. They have a massive problem, but all of Hawaii is not closed to tourism, but somebody's going to have to get that message out for them. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to open up to questions from my fellow board members, just to see what their thoughts are, and then we can see if anybody from the audience has some things they'd like to add.
Okay. Commissioners, Commissioner Slory?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I understand what you're saying, there are three things that you're putting on the table right now. Expand the use of, uses of the use of revenue, a dedicated aviation fund, and a reserve fund.
Correct.
So I guess I have no problem with sending this to the Tourist Development Council to see if there are certain, if they, and basically if they can make the argument for expanding it to some other uses. But I, you know, offhand, I don't see, I have no great desire or impetus to change it, but if they can make the case for it, I think that's fine. On the reserve fund, I think that's fine and appropriate. We just come up with some amount or some percentage of the annual budget. That's good. I'm not in agreement with the dedicated aviation fund. I think that, I'm not here to pick winners or losers, and I don't see why we would pick one specific industry or whatever. And, you know, just different things come to mind. I mean, Elite Airways is great, but, you know, thinking about where they go, two of the places, well, one of the places like Newark, that might be a good place to get tourists, but I don't think Asheville or Bar Harbor are. I mean, Bar Harbor has less than 6,000 people in it, and those are probably mostly tourists that go up there anyway. So I mean, but again, the bigger issue is picking winners or losers. And I don't like us, you know, to do that. What will happen then is that regardless of the benefits of dollars for an aviation fund, they'll get spent, whereas some other use of the money might be actually better for getting tourists, and the funds won't be there. So I think any, every particular use ought to stand on its own merits. So I'm happy that the airport has decided to try to get tourist development funds this year. We'll see if they can actually make the case, but to dedicate it, I would have a problem with that. So those would be my initial comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Fleischer, any comments?
Not at this time. I do have.
Okay. Commissioner Adams?
I do have a few comments. The first thing, as far as the need for reserve funds and being able to address situations that may occur on an emergency basis, we already have the ability to do that. We've done that in the past through the economic downturn, when the oil spill did happen, the Chambers and other groups got together and did some extra marketing, working with our partners and with the county to fund that. So that ability is there. The other thing I would say is we're in the process right now of going through the grant, the grant application process. So this is not really the time, I'm assuming, or I guess I'm hoping, that this is something you would like to talk about in the future and not affect this current process, because, I mean, you can't change the rules of the game in the middle of the game.
No, you can't, but they only meet three times a year, so you have three bites at the apple.
We meet four times a year.
Okay. Well, in watching the videos, when you look at the substantive meetings, watching them for the last three years, you have your May meeting is your big one.
Correct. That's next week.
Right, correct. That, they don't meet on a very frequent basis, so you have to bring up the discussion at some time, and wherever, if there is a consideration to change, then we're, once you, if you go through the process to change our ordinance, if that takes four months and that's past the deadline, then it defaults to the following year.
So I've been on the TDC board for 10 years, currently am the chair. We had a wonderful chair prior to me that got us through the economic downturn and has started raising those tourist tax revenues have been going up for the past several years.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams.
And he did a great job with that, and hopefully they continue to go up as they are this year. But one of the things that we talk about, and you could probably speak to this as well pretty much every year, is the funding allocation and how that allocation is set up. So we do talk about this very frequently. At our last meeting, we actually did talk about what was going on on the state level and the impacts that might have to us locally. At that time, we decided that we would wait and see what the final language would be. We would get through our grant funding this year and possibly have a conversation at our meeting over the summer related to whatever impacts the state legislature was going to have, because at our meeting, our last meeting, that language wasn't finalized. So we talked about multiple different things when it came to our current funding and what we are funding and different ways to address that. So the TDC is already working on this. I'm sure that discussion will happen over the summer or in the fall. The other issue that rolls into that is what happens to the allocation once the Dodger Town bonds are paid for. That's an additional penny that will go back into the pot, and we'll have to discuss what to do with it at that time. So we do have a committee that is working on this, that's kind of charged with doing this very thing that you're suggesting. So I would suggest that this go to them, have that discussion in that venue with those tourism experts, and then bring something back, look for their recommendation and see what they may want to do. But I don't feel like we, as a commission, have all the information in front of us that we would need to have a discussion or to make a decision, and that's really the group that's charged with that statutorily, and we should probably let them do their job and work through those issues.
So based on the committee that we have, when would we, do they have a timeline of if they meet at the summertime, and they would bring back findings in October, or some before the end of the year timeframe for recommendations to adopt new uses? Is that kind of an expected timeline that we might see?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the very expected timeline.
Okay. I would like to go back to a couple of the items that Commissioner Slary had mentioned on the aviation side. To be eligible to qualify, one... To be eligible to qualify, one, they would, in my mind, they would have to be already servicing the route, and the money could only be spent on driving passengers from that destination to Vero Beach. You can't, you couldn't use it the other way around. I do agree that you'd want to have safeguards to, if it's proposing, launching a new route where you've got no historical, they haven't committed to doing it, that would not be a good expense of the money. But I know Eric has a number of other long-term vision things for the airport, potentially some other participants that, you know, but I think people have finally, Vero Beach Regional Airport is finally on the radar for a number of folks, as we've been saying for, I think, back in 2013, when, when we purchased our first set of air passenger traveler DOT data and kind of had a shocking surprise of, when you look at our catchment area, how many potential customers we have. And yes, Bar Harbor is a very small footprint, but you have to take the area around that, that that airport would service, that they may want to come this way. Some people may like to come from the Northeast down to here. You have to pick a destination spot to where you're going to service them from, but with any, any proposed change in, in uses, you have to have protections in there so the money's not squandered. I, ideally, and Susan probably remembers this, and so does Commissioner Fletcher, from about three years ago, when we had a lengthy discussion on making everybody measure their heads on beds as the Sports Commission does. They're the only one that has a definitive measurement program out there. Not saying that the other ones don't do a great job, but you have one that measures and the rest that don't, but there's not a way to bring all those into a measurement formula, you know, tourist destination weddings. How do you?
Well, I think.
You can't track that.
I think that that's not a completely accurate statement. There are other of our tourism partners that do measure heads on beds. They do it in a much different way than the Sports Commission does. The Sports Commission uses a multiplier that they get through their state agency, so it.
But the heads are booked through their site.
Excuse me?
The hotel beds are booked directly through their site, so they, they know exactly how many rooms, where the other ones are booked directly.
No, not all of them, and, and that is, that's not completely accurate either. So I think that one of the things, and when you're talking about aviation marketing, or any marketing for that matter, you know, we have, the Chambers are our dedicated tourism agencies within the county. They have the ability to leverage state funding, grant monies through Visit Florida that are available for aviation marketing, for other types of marketing programs. And, you know, this, again, is really a conversation that should be occurring at TDC where we have all those partners in place, where we could really be putting together programs and initiatives that are very value-added and are getting the most bang for our buck by leveraging everybody that's at the table. I think that it's very, it's very easy to pick certain aspects of each program without looking at the overall umbrella of TDC, marketing, and tourism, and how it all fits together. Each group has a role to play, but each group is not the be-all and end-all. It's, it does not operate in a vacuum, and people come to Indian River County for multiple different reasons beyond just aviation or just cultural. I mean, people come here for ecotourism, but we're not talking about carving out a specific ecotourism fund, which quite frankly, I know aviation is your thing, but ecotourism is my thing. So I don't want to get into who, we're funding each other's favorite things or favorite topics. If we want to talk about different types of funding and what we are attracting and what we have in Indian River County, we need to understand why people are coming here, who it is that's coming here, and what they're doing when they're here, so we are using our money to attract those people. We're reaching our customers, our visitors, and that we're giving them something that adds to the value and extends their stay or entices them to come back once they do get here. And that is the whole process that we go through in the grant allocation funding process, the questions that we ask, the presentations that we receive, and we take a lot of time building that package, that overall marketing package. And I will say that most of the partners that we have and that we fund are working collaboratively with each other. So while the Historical Society, as an example, might bring a project forward through their funding, that project is usually in partnership with one of the cities or municipalities, with a chamber, with the county, or with other things that is, that is adding that. And it's the same with the Chambers. They work together to create DVDs, destination videos. I think they're going through the process of updating those currently, and that is a huge value added that's used for all of our partners. The videos that were created about the airport and the Vero man, those were funded with TDC dollars, and that is something, again, that it's a collaboration between multiple agencies. And I think that's really where we need to be going and letting those agencies do what they need to do to build a bigger and bigger program that's building on what we have to offer. So I think we're kind of getting, we're kind of getting ahead of ourselves, and this conversation really needs to occur at a TDC committee meeting where we have all those people at the table. And, you know, all the commissioners are welcome to come to those meetings and provide input. I think the more input that, that we get, it's always better. And a lot of those questions can be addressed there where we have that information and the people that, that can answer them.
Okay. And one other item I wanted to mention, I figured out a number of months ago that on that Wednesday for TDC, I'm attending a conference out of town for something not related to the county, so I would not be able to attend that. So this is kind of my only venue to, to bring this up. And going back to the committee or the group of members of TDC that are working on this, when I look at the February agenda and the tomorrow's agenda, I don't, what do you, what do you list that under? And in watching the video from the last, the end of last, the last 17 meeting and February meeting, and maybe I missed it on the discussion, but is there a dedicated group of people working on, looking at the use of revenues and the legislation, or?
No. There was a discussion that was had, and perhaps it wasn't at the February meeting, perhaps it was at the December meeting. I don't recall, but I know we've had that discussion this year. We talked about adding additional funding, adding another cent to the, to the bed tax to possibly collect more and have more to divvy out. We also talked about the legislation at that point, and we talked about Dodger Town bonds. And kind of, since everything was a little bit in flux, we determined at that point that we would hold off on making any changes and discussing the extra cent, see what happens with Dodger Town, and we kind of backtrack. So that might be the meeting. If it wasn't the February meeting, then it was the December meeting. Do you remember, Jason?
I can't recall exactly which one. It may have been the December meeting. I will say the May meeting, which is the meeting where we, where the TDC allocates the dollars, is always very busy. We've stripped everything away from that meeting except the presentations and the ranking, because there's barely enough time to get that business done in those meetings. And then usually the, you know, whether it's the August or, or the December, the February meeting is available for these other topics. And we do frequently talk about rating systems and can we allocate additional dollars for a reserve, talking about that fourth penny at Dodger Town. I think it may have been December when that was discussed. If it wasn't February, it was definitely December.
And we, at that point, at that meeting, we discussed a backtracking of the timeline because of changes needed to be made based on the Dodger Town bond money. We had a timeline that we needed to adhere to, to have something in place when that did happen. So there was a timeline discussed. I don't have those minutes in front of me, so I don't know what that is off the top of my head, but we don't have a subcommittee or something like that. The committee is the people that are on the list, and that would be the people that would be working on it with staff and with our other partner agencies to, you know, to kind of see what's going on. So because May is solely dedicated to the funding process, the next meeting would be where this could and would be discussed.
And that would be August?
That meeting is in August, yes. It's the second or third Wednesday in August.
Okay. Well, that sounds like that would be the time to see how things shake out between now and then. Any other changes in rule writing with the legislature? If there's any, I don't think there's any other changes pending. And have a good in-depth discussion at that particular meeting in August.
Commissioner Fletcher, comments?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And I wanted to yield my time to Commissioner Adams, as she is the cousin, the current chairman of the TDC, which I believe this discussion most certainly would belong and not here at this point, although we make the ultimate decision as far as the, or codify all of the decisions on disbursement. This whole process has been in motion for several months at this point, and there is a lot of work that's been done up until next week's meeting that I believe can't be altered. So timing is probably not good on it.
You couldn't change the ordinance between now and next Wednesday, so by default, it would have to go to the following year, which could match up with the discussion that the group's already, is going to be working on after next week.
Correct. I just wanted to remind you, and we did receive some accolades about what's happening in tourism in Indian River County. The, the partners that apply for the, the grants have done the yeoman's job. We have gained tremendous amount of success with tourism through marketing, promotion, and advertising. And that seems to, I think we have the recipe for success. No other county has done what we've done, and we don't have the big attractions. We just have the perfect environment that has to be promoted, and it's being done very well, I might add. It's across the nation. They, they're hidden between the apps and the programs and the advertising and promotion. I brought up at a TDC meeting, I was in Times Square in New York City at a hotel in which I was manager, and I looked across the way, and on the tron, I saw our ad from the chamber. I saw our ad that was talked about. What do you think the odds are that I'd be sitting in a chair on the 10th floor on the balcony and looking out at Vero Beach? It did say Vero Beach. We do include everyone in the concept. And the draw was there, and the numbers are happening. And I think that we need a better understanding of what is actually happening here, conceptually. It's not about a simple equation, let's change it in equation, because we're stuck with the numbers until the historic Dodger Town location is, is paid. That's coming soon, and it's time for discussion. It's time to talk about it for years up the road, because I think we have two more years. And with that, you know, we've been threatened with beach renourishment concerns, and that has gone. I know that you've been in Tallahassee several times this year talking about it. And during that time, we, we were on the shallow end of the dream pool. The beaches are a big part of our tourism, too. So we have to look at the equation that's been there, that's been time-proven and success-proven, as opposed to trying to recreate a wheel that, quite frankly, is not broken. It's working. Now, that doesn't mean that we should be close-minded, there are not other options out there that maybe can improve a little better in, in some areas, but I think this is part and parcel to exactly what the requests are from certain applicants in the granting process, and it's, they're more, more like parallel tracks of what we're seeing that's going to be proposed to the TDC. Therefore, I believe it belongs at the TDC at this point, and a further discussion on that, that meeting that's a little more shallow in August that you can have a robust discussion for.
Great. Look forward to that. And also, you know, we have, as I mentioned, Keith Kite's here with, has two great properties, and you look at the other hotel operators, cumulative, what they spend is a vast amount that's, what we do is a small percentage. I mean, it's still significant dollars, but when you look at the marketing plans and, and speaking with some of those folks, they, they're not going to tell you how much they spent on marketing last year, but if you ask them, is it a mid-six-figure number, or is it a seven-figure number? You can read between the lines that they're, they're spending millions of dollars helping to additionally promote our community, which is great, and it's a combined effort where I look at it as, it rises all boats in the harbor. When that, when those visitors come here, they're going to stay at one particular place, but they're going to help all the other operators in the tourism industry and our community. So it's a great team effort by everybody.
And also, you, you pointed out the, that the Treasure Coast Sports Commission was the only entity that was monitoring hotels and heads to beds. That's the farthest thing from the truth. But in 2006, the Treasure Coast Sports Commission created a organizational thrust to account for the heads and beds, and they have a program which, yes, you can request through the sporting event to have the rooms, but there is also a relationship. The hotels themselves, and having been a former manager at a hotel, I know that we do call-arounds and we also do notations, and while it's not an empirical science, it is fairly accurate as to how many people are in attendance for a specific event within the hotel. As a matter of fact, when you have a 2,000-room hotel, it's a little challenging. When you have a 200-room hotel or a 300-room hotel, it's a lot easier because it's all visual as well. And those numbers are calculated and reported, and we are getting the, the funding that's necessary to account for the heads and beds, heads to beds. But again, to, to say that the Treasure Coast Sports Commission is the only entity that monitors this process is grossly errant.
Well, in 2014, when I, you were kind enough to let me stay at the podium for about an hour and a half talking about measuring heads on beds. At that meeting, it was mentioned that it was too challenging, that they, the others didn't have a central booking system like they do. If there's been significant improvements made in counting, and, and you're right, in a small market like us, you could call up four people and say, hey, how many? And I don't know if somebody officially does that. I guess somebody does, call daily to figure out how many people are here for a particular event. A little harder to track. I guess they have more of a seamless automated process that if you're coming in with a team and you've got 150 players and you need 75 rooms and you book them through the site, that number's calculated pretty simply for you. It's easy to get.
In the hotel trade, competitors play very well with each other. Again, they want the market share in their own hotel, but they are, it's not like liar's poker. They, they do give the information, because after all, I want to be able to accommodate any guests that you can't. So I think it's truthful. We do have a hotel year here that might be able to enlighten everyone on it.
He'll want to keep them if the TDR number's good enough, or if it's a real low number, they might want to go to another provider, but, but that's a separate discussion.
I'll go ahead and give my thoughts here as well, and I will point out that I did also serve as chairman of the TDC for a few years, and the, the entire time I've been on the Board here, that one and a half cents has always been dedicated to putting heads on beds. And so Commissioners, work to your first point on the expanded uses. If you go back and look at the history of that legislatively, why this was done, there's two main reasons. One is there's a couple Panhandle counties that get flooded with spring breakers, and it overwhelms their public safety staff. So in that updated statute, there is kind of very specific targeting, allowing them to use some of that money for public safety costs. The other thing is, I think a lot of counties fail to get sales tax ballots passed, and so they are now looking at, okay, well, we can vote in a tourist tax pretty easily. We don't have to go to a general ballot. And so they're looking to use some of those tourist tax funds to fund things that I think we historically have funded through our sales tax. For example, one of the items is beach park facilities, and I think that we've always used our sales tax if we're building restrooms or playgrounds, things like that, beach park facilities. And I think that's a fairer way to do it, because those facilities are used not only by the tourists, but also a lot of our year-round residents, and, and everybody pays a sales tax, and I think that's a much fairer way. And I think that's a much fairer way to pay for those type of facilities. It's through that, and then I, I don't think it's any secret that at least one Vero City Council member has been pushing for TDC funds to build a large two-story lifeguard tower with a very nice red brick fireplace and chimney, and I'm not sure that that's something that would draw heads-on-beds. And she has promoted this as, as public safety, and my response is, well, you know, we, we fund the sheriff and our emergency services, our public safety through our general fund and through our tax revenue, and if we do need to build a new lifeguard tower, we use our sales tax revenue for that. Again, that's where I, I think is appropriate. So, unless there's a very specific item that you think we should add, I'm, I'm not real in favor of expanding the uses. I think the one-and-a-half cents should be to those projects that bring heads-on-beds that we have in the past, and that if we do need to build facilities, we should use our sales tax, which I think is a fair way to do. Your second point on the dedicated aviation fund, I think we're all very excited about the success that the airport has had. I think we're all very excited and, and glad to hear that ALLETE has started the commercial service and expanded it. So, I think they are, are doing a great job with that. But I do think that, that the Chamber is our designated tourism marketing agency, and that funds for promoting whatever it be, be it our wedding destination, our beaches, our airport and flights, the, the marketing should funnel through our, the Chamber, which is our designated agency. And I will point out that, that the Chamber has already been very active in supporting the airport and ALLETE Airways. They sponsored a iHeartRadio campaign promoting the Asheville flights in, in Vero Beach last summer when that segment came on. The, the Chamber and Costa de Este participated in a radio segment promoting Vero Beach and ALLETE Airways. The Chamber has purchased half-page ads in the Wall Street Journal promoting ALLETE flights in, in Vero Beach in the New York markets. And the Chamber also attends the New York Times Travel Show every year to promote Vero Beach and ALLETE. So, I think the Chamber's already working with the airport to promote it, and I think the, the best way to continue that is, again, for the, the airport to work with our Chamber partners and say, hey, ALLETE may be adding a, a new route to, you know, wherever, and can you help us market that some? And I think the Chamber has been very responsible, saying, yeah, sure, we'll be glad to put together a, a promotional for that. So, again, I think it's great the airport's having success with ALLETE and such, but I do think that the Chamber is our designated tourism marketing agency, and, and that's where the, the funds should flow through and work with the, the city and the airport for the promotion they, they need. And then finally, reserve funds, sure, I, I kind of thought we were already putting some aside in reserves so that we can react to not only disasters like hurricanes and such, but also this past year, and, and I think the board approved the funding. We had a, a special opportunity come up, which I think will be seen on TV in June, I'm thinking, June or July? June 23rd will hit the TV, and so that'll be something very exciting, but that gave us the flexibility to be able to respond to an opportunity as it came up. So, that, that's kind of where I am, I'm, I'm not in favor of expanding the uses, and I think any of the marketing money should continue to flow through the Chamber as our designated marketing agency. And so, that's kind of just my thoughts on it.
And a, a couple of comments back. I, I think with the number, since it went from a half of one page to three pages, is let the TDC committee look at it and bring back to us their thoughts on, and there's clearly some that are targeted, they were written in there for, you know, unique, unique problems they're trying to solve. But there are a couple in there that I think probably would be beneficial to the area and like to see their committee's work bring it back to us and say.
Do you have examples of what you're looking at?
Uh, the, I'm not completely, I'm completely against the concept of the Taj Mahal lifeguard station in the city, but if you look at that, about 15% of that facility is the lifeguard tower. The rest of it is other stuff, the meeting room and those things. If, if the city wanted to apply for a portion of the cost of something to go towards the lifeguard tower, I'm personally not dead-set against that. If they want to then jazz it up with other money from somewhere else, that's, that's their business. You know, on the museum side, and I have not spoken with him about this in, in over a year, but we all know that Mr. O'Malley has one of the finest baseball collections, probably that most anybody had in the country. None of it's on display, and I have asked them, you know, at some point, it'd be great if it was on display somewhere here in Vero Beach with all the, the history with Jackie Robinson, all the history with the Dodgers, and being able to support that type of, of activity on something that the county already owns, I think would be something that I would personally be in favor of. And there's a number of other ones, but I'd rather see what the committee's thoughts are. I obviously have my special interest, with Susan hit on, aviation is one that's key to me. It's one that, if you're flying here from someplace else and you don't already own a home here, you're going to be spending a, a night or two or many nights in one of our great hotels that we have here in Vero Beach. And that then generates the return dollars that help keep things being, being funded. So, if, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, there's, let's let the committee kind of go through it, have them look at the, the current uses and the new uses, and have them bring back zero, or one, two, or three, or, or some combination thereof, and, and hear what their thoughts are on it.
Yeah, and I have no problem with the committee taking a look at it, I just wanted to put out there for the record where, where I stand on it, so. So, any final comments from the Commissioners? If not, I was going to go ahead and open it up to the public, but Jason?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, just want to talk to the additional uses question. If you'll recall, this last legislative session, there was a bill out there that was, that expanded the use, the potential uses of, of tourist tax to build sewers and roadways. The county was opposed to that, and I think for good reason. Fortunately for us, that legislation doesn't apply to us, you have to collect over 10 million in tourism taxes for that to imply to, to apply.
Maybe in a couple of years, we'll hit that.
Right, yeah, yeah, with, with a good economy, we, we may, we may get in there. But I think the overriding thing that we need to look at is there needs to be a good purpose for adding additional uses. To me, the, the lifeguard tower concept is not it. I, I think if there are shortcomings to that current lifeguard tower, which I would concede, I would agree with, with the folks out there, that that is infrastructure that, that the city should fix. I don't think it's, you guys set policy, and, and the TDC should look at this first, I think, but, but staff's recommendation would be that we shouldn't take this money and allocate it back to ourselves or government when, when, when there are other, higher-use things to do with it. I mean, let's consider a scenario where the city wants a lifeguard tower, and the county wants a lifeguard tower funded from this. So, you're going to have an inherent conflict of interest there. I don't think we should be funding our lifeguard towers out of tourist tax, and, and I don't think that the city should either. I think those are infrastructure items that should be funded from other sources by, by the government, so I'll, I'll just say that. I, I do like the, you know, I, I can get behind setting aside some funds for reserves, but I, I think we need to be careful in considering what types of things, maybe something like Mr. O'Malley's museum-type concept might, might, might work, but I think we want to make sure that we don't set this up to be, to where cities and counties are asking for money from the tourist tax. So, I, I don't think that's a, a good policy direction to go in, so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just so that there's no confusion with the, the conversations with, with some of the folks at Dodger Town. The O'Malleys have never asked for anything, they, especially on this particular regard, this is something that, as the collection, part of the collection was shown to me, the discussion of, wouldn't it be great if it could be made visible to the public? They actually went through, I think, an internal review of if you're going to display things such as like the Navy SEAL Museum, they went through and revamped their display, and you kind of had elaborate review process so that the items are protected, but this is not being driven or asked for by them. It's something, it would be wonderful if they made the items available and we could participate in a, in hosting a location for something like that, but I want to make it clear that, that they have not asked for anything whatsoever in any of the discussions. And that, I just want to make that clear, because they're great folks, and I don't want to raise any cloud that they're trying to ask for something, which they're clearly not.
And just one last comment I have is, I'm usually kind of a big fan of if it's not broke, don't fix it. And I think for the third year in a row, the biggest complaint I've heard is there's no parking, or it's too long of a wait to get a restaurant seat, or the, the traffic's too bad. The hotels, every time I talk to a hotelier, they say, yeah, we're, you know, we're booked, we're slamming it, we're, you know, we're busy. So, you know, there, I, I think there's a lot of positives going on with, with how we've been doing things. And I think that'll continue, and so, you know, I'm kind of, I like how we're doing things and moving forward. But, anyway, is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on Commissioner Zork's item? Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Keith, if you give your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Keith Kite, I'm a member of the Tourism Development Council, developer and owner of the Spring Hill Suites, the Hampton Inn, and we're building another hotel now, thanks to marketing. But any case, 1045 Winding River Road, Vero Beach, Florida. Probably a lot redundant here, matter of fact, some of these quotes are probably exactly what all of you said, but going, I guess, back to Commissioner Solari's original comments, if I understand it correctly, and, and, you know, basically, I just got this hit on me last night, but felt the need to come here. The reserve fund, we, we have a reserve fund on the TDC board. I'm probably one of the biggest proponents of having the largest reserve fund we can possibly have. I push it every single time. When we had no marketing, and we had no hotels, and we had a disaster economy, it was the reserve fund that saved us. There'll be another day like that, so I think that's okay. Expanded uses, I would never be for them, would never support them, I think it's a dangerous road. And dedicated funds, I think, is a dangerous path as well. I think that it needs to be a, a fluid process. I believe, you know, the, the proposal should definitely be tabled at this time. I actually believe it really has no merit and should probably be abandoned. I think the cities and agencies and others only, you know, come to these sorts of things when the tourism trough this time. It's been other troughs other times when funds are working. And it's, it's exactly because of what everyone said, tourism's marketing success. The success of the tourism dollars is exactly why an agenda's even up here, why we have experts in marketing at, at the chambers, why we have directed marketing dollars available to put in the best available uses across the boards in, 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 in many things is, is driven the success. I think there's very, very strong concrete results in that, being three new hotels being developed right now, 100-room Staybridge, brand-new Fairfield Inn and Suites out at 95, and the new Star Suites down the street. I believe these sorts of uses are, you know, for the county as a whole, not just tourism. I think it bodes well for the future of the county as a, as a much more sustainable activity as far as benefiting the entire county for jobs, for our economy, for the county's tax base, not only in sale, tourism tax dollars, but sales tax dollars and property tax dollars. So, I think it's a dangerous, dangerous road to mess with marketing. I think the county and, and the Tourism Development Council, you know, it, it's been a long road with Joe, with Peter, Susan. I think they've chosen very wisely in, in using the chambers and concentrating these dollars in marketing to drive the tourism success that we've had. I can assure you, you know, from my point of view and all the others, if it wasn't successful, the TDC and this council would be well aware of that. Lastly, this is another, you know, repeated thing, but the requested dollars can be vetted, they can be discussed, they can be analyzed at the TDC level. They can be, they can be discussed at the multiple tourism events we have. This Friday, the head of Visit Florida, the head of Visit Florida's marketing will be at Disney talking about all sorts of marketing activities that can benefit our county, what we're doing. There's venues throughout the year, every month, that you can attend to understand and analyze and see where marketing is headed and what we want to do to promote even more tourism in this county. Certainly, the success of, of ALLETE coming here, I believe, is a direct reflection of the marketing that we had to get them here. So, to, to turn around and have dedicated items, I would not be a fan of, or I would ask this commission not to support as I appreciate the Commissioners voicing the same concerns. And I guess lastly, I just wanted to point out that marketing, it's about a brand. It's about Hilton, it's about Marriott, it's about Coca-Cola. In this county, it's about Dodger Town, it's about the name, Vero Beach. And our dollar should be that. It's not about some structure, some place, some event. It's about us, it's about Joe Wiggins. So, when you talk about marketing dollars, talk about them holistically as a brand. When Joe is sitting in New York City on the 10th floor of a hotel and sees Vero Beach, he doesn't see some structure that we want to build someday. The Coca-Cola bottle's been around for 100 years. Vero Beach will be around for 100 years next year. Let's continue the promotion of why, when people go around the world and say Dodger Town and Vero Beach, why we live here, why we love this place, and why our marketing has led to such tremendous success during this economic recovery. So, I would stay away from those other venues with marketing dollars. So, that's what I want to say.
Keith, thank you for your comments, and you know, Commissioner Flescher and I, we've stated, we've served as chairman of the TDC, and we did okay, but I think you see really big things, because we have our shining light in charge now. And we, really big things are going to happen, trust me, because we've, we've got the best on it right now, so it'll.
I, I agree with that.
Very good.
You know, you have, you have Dodger Town and a lot of other places to use it, so I would, I would be cautious of that and use it.
Sounds like you guys are going to have to get helmets on the dais.
Why?
It's going to be active.
Okay, great. I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you for what you do.
Eric, did you want to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric Menjer, the Airport Director for the City of Vero Beach, for the record, and do want to thank Commissioner Zork for bringing this forward, and I think the intention is nothing but noble and good. Tourism is a good thing, I think the airport is right in the middle of tourism, and we always want to support tourism. But I don't want to keep you all very long, I can see where the discussion was going, and I don't think we need to belay the point. But I, I do want to say that it is a collaborative effort, it has always been a collaborative effort, and that's exactly what we have done in the, in the city's marketing, at least at the airport, is to promote the city and the county. And that's what we continue to do, because that is what attracts people that want to fly into, to the airport. So, we continue to do that. The, one of the things that the airport is concerned with is competition with other airports. And as a commercial service airport, we're starting to see pressure on our budget at the, at the small-city airport. For an example, Sarasota Airport spends $300,000 for every new destination that an airline puts into that community in marketing, $300,000. And I know in talking to the tourism director in the Chamber that they're having the same pressures, because we're trying to compete with other, sometimes larger communities. the same pressures because we're trying to compete with other, sometimes larger communities trying to attract people to this community. So, we want to try to do that, we want to continue to do that, uh, through this method of funding or any others. I think you all probably know that I, for the third year in a row, we've, we've, we've submitted to the Small Community Air Service Development Grant, the SCASD grant, which is a federal grant for funding for the very same thing, for, for marketing, and we'll continue to do that. We try to do what we can to try to bring in the funding to do this, but we're, we're pressured. We, we just don't have the funding at this airport to compete. So, I guess it's really a decision, do we want to, to move toward a little bit larger of a community, uh, commercial service airport where we can have a little bit more balance? It's not about just elite, it's, it's about the businesses at the airport, Piper and Cannons and Flight Safety and all the businesses that we try to attract to this, you know, area and try to support them as well. Uh, so, just, just so you know, it's not a very small thing at all, and a paradigm shift, shift could happen should we be successful in attracting a larger airline here. It could actually make a huge difference for this community. Uh, and if this board is in favor of that, I will continue to move in that direction. That's what we're doing at the city level, and I'd like to continue to do that, so thank you for, for the time.
Thank you, Eric. Is there anyone else? Yes, Penny?
Good morning. I think it's still morning here. Uh, I wanted to make just a few comments. Penny Chandler, Indian River County, Chamber of Commerce. First of all, I think I've missed three tourist council meetings in the twenty-three years that I've been around, and I can assure you, they're all substantive. Um, our tourism director, Allison McNeil, uh, by attending, um, functions that are put on by Visit Florida, um, heard a presentation and then later spoke to the head of Visit Florida about an air grant, and I just want to bring that to your attention. Uh, there is a five hundred thousand dollar air grant that, uh, the president of Visit Florida has even reached out again to Allison and said, you know, "Would you like me to sort of keep this, um, in consideration for your area in the event that there are new, um, airlines or anything coming in?" And all they need is a letter of intent about that, um, to, to move that forward. So, that is out there, and we are very much in favor of, um, of promoting, uh, transportation by air into Vero Beach. Uh, we recognize that, um, you know, some, it's like was mentioned earlier by Commissioner Solari, that, uh, a number of the places may not be, um, great in population and, but nonetheless, they are still being promoted, uh, by our tourism director as, um, part of the overall marketing for, for tourism. Um, I've always felt that it's very important to, uh, maintain and even increase the amount in reserves, and, um, that has nothing to do with following a hurricane, promoting the area. What we saw in two thousand four was that we had many, many, many fewer hotel rooms, and this is typically what happens in an area. So, you're not out there marketing your area because you have actually fewer hotel rooms, and the rooms that you do have are being used by FEMA, they're being used by the insurance professionals that come into the area and, and take those rooms. So, it's important to have that reserve and not mess with that formula for reserve because, um, that doesn't have anything to do with after hurricane marketing of, of us as destination. Um, and some of that reserve fund has everything to do with how we, um, repair our beaches and, uh, maintain the infrastructure that we need. Um, there was something mentioned about the Sports Commission and, uh, looking at the way of tracking. Um, we also look at tracking and, um, subscribe to Smith Travel Research, which allows information to come back to us about how the room nights are, um, the number of room nights that are taken in the hotels, um, just to give you an example, five hundred and fifty thousand room nights, um, was a mention about the Sports Commission accounting for some of those rooms, which they indeed do, but many of the rooms taken by the sporting events that are coming into the county, those room nights do not pay bed tax. So, in fact, those room nights, uh, are tax exempt and don't contribute at all to the fund, so that needs to be looked at also. Um, there was, when I first came into the area, there was a gentleman who was on the commission, John Tippin, you've probably heard his name, and John always said, "I don't have time for any of this intrigue," and this is sort of intrigue, uh, the way this has been brought forward because, uh, we don't have, uh, we don't have something that's necessarily broken. I think it's always a good idea to take a look at additional uses, um, and certainly when a number of uses are increased by the state, every community takes a look at the additional uses. I think the Tourism, uh, Council has done a good job looking at those potential uses over the years. I think they will continue to do that. Um, and again, I don't subscribe to the idea that there's anything that's broken, nor do I subscribe to the idea that necessarily, um, uh, something different has to occur with the reserves. I, I think you have to be very careful there, where you're tramping. So, be careful with the reserves for sure, and take into consideration that there are grants that are available from the state for aviation. Uh, we are very supportive, as, um, Eric knows, we're very supportive of, um, uh, new carriers, the existing carrier that's there, and, uh, we will do, continue to work on marketing on behalf of the airport. Thanks.
Ms. Chairman, this horse appears dead. I think we can stop beating it.
Well, no, I, well, I, I'd like to bring up just a few short questions, so I could ask Jason. What is our formula for non-beach renourishment reserves? Since, since Penny had mentioned that we have one, what is it?
Well, so, we have a, a fund balance reserve policy that applies to all of our funds that requires a, a, uh, thirty percent in total fund balance, uh, reserves. Uh, what we, what we actually like to see in, in TDC is more than that because sometimes the downturns can be, be very, uh, significant, particularly if we were hit by, uh, by, uh, an Irma directly like, uh, like the Keys, um, and Southwest Florida, where, uh, we would need a substantial amount there. But our, our official policy is, is a thirty percent fund balance policy for, for these funds.
Okay, and secondly, just to commenting on Smith Travel, and they're a great resource, and I do subscribe to them to try to keep the pulse on the, the tourism industry, but what you don't find is Smith Travel will give you your ADR, your average daily rate, tell your occupancy level, but it's not going to tell you who used the room. And that's where measuring the way the Sports Commission measures it is in part through their booking portal, um, that, that's unique to them, but, um, Smith Travel's a great resource for the hotel industry, but it doesn't tell you who, who is the occupant of the room. That's, that's the difference in, in, uh, in that. So, with that, we'll look forward to, uh, an August meeting to, and I'd say if, so, eighteen years ago was the last time we visited use of revenue, and if any person in business hasn't looked at how, how you do a significant portion of your business of how you use your revenue, um, in eighteen years, I think it's just time for a fresh look, and the committee has that, um, already laid out, so we'll look forward to seeing what their thoughts are.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Zork.
I have one more comment about that. Um, that is brought up at TDC. It may not be on paper, but it is brought up, and when people come before the TDC, whether it's the Cultural Council, Heritage, um, the Chambers, Sebastian or Indian River, those kinds of items are indeed brought up, and they may not be put down in a resolution or a statute or something like that, but the, I know under, uh, other commissioners, and again, under Commissioner Adams, the members of the TDC say, "Well, have you thought of this? Have you thought of that? Can you try new ways? Can you do these things?" And so, those other uses are, are definitely brought forward, just to reassure you.
Thank you, Penny. We now move to Special Districts and Boards, the Solid Waste Disposal District. We have the minutes of March sixth, March twenty, and April ten, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Fleischer, seconded by Commissioner Adams for all three minutes. Any comment from the public? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye. Any opposed? That carries five zero. Item four, final pay to GeoSynTech for one year of groundwater monitoring and reporting and related consulting services at the former South Gifford Road landfill.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I've been waiting for this one. It's an annual event. Um, I'm so happy that it's, it's here today so that I can move approval of this item. But the next one's actually my favorite, so I, you know, hope nobody jumps in.
We have a motion by Commissioner Solari, seconded by Commissioner Adams for approval. Is anyone from the public wishes to comment on the motion before us? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye. Any opposed? That also passes five zero. Item five, the next year's monitoring and reporting related to consulting services at the former South Gifford Road landfill.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would so be happy to, to, uh, move, make a motion to move this forward for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Solari, seconded by Commissioner Fleischer, under discussion.
So, I, in the agenda item, there's a line which I, I believe says that this is the semi-annual report. Yeah, the GeoSynTech's proposal includes two semi-annual monitoring reports. From time to time, I bring up the idea that maybe this has gone along for enough years in a very unoffenf, uneventful way that we might once again ask FDEP if we can move to annual monitoring reports, and so I'll just put that out to the staff, and they probably have the letter which they can just, uh, you know, change the date on and, and ask again, so with, with that, I, I'm happy to, to move this item forward.
I, I do have one question for either Vinny or Himanshu. Um, the previous item that we just approved was for the same activities and was seventy-one thousand, but the current proposal for another year of monitoring and reporting is ninety-three thousand. Is there a reason why it's twenty, twenty-two thousand more this coming year?
For the record, Vincent Burke, Director of Utility Services, and Himanshu Mette, who's the managing director. There's some additional work that's included in this upcoming plan. There's some, uh, wellhead repair and, uh, brush cleaning that was not included in last year. To break that down, the brush cleaning, uh, there's, um, some needed, uh, access areas where they're going to go into a six-foot diameter, um, area to be able to get to the wellheads. And in talking with Himanshu right before that, we were looking at, uh, the monitoring wells. There's three wells in particular, shallow, medium, and then deep well, that need to have repaired to the well pads, uh, and/or well plugs and/or new manhole lids. So, that work is now included in this work that was not included in the previous one for seventy-one and change that would be necessary. There's also some surveying to then tie that in on the new location in case the well case needs to be adjusted, those have to have updated surveys. So, there's additional work with the cleaning and the wellhead maintenance of these monitoring wells.
Okay, thank you. Make sure there's any other questions of staff? We have a motion by Commissioner Solari, seconded by Commissioner Fleischer. All in favor signify with aye. Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. Moving to the Environmental Control Board, minutes of the meeting September thirteen, two thousand sixteen. Move approval.
Second.
Second. Can anybody remember that far back? Um, motion by Commissioner Solari, seconded by Commissioner Zork. All in favor signify with aye. Any opposed? That carries five zero. And the Environmental Control Hearing Board Annual Report, is there a motion to accept the report?
Accept.
We, and I'll second that. We have a motion from Commissioner Fleischer, seconded by myself. All in favor signify with aye. Any opposed? That also carries five zero. That concludes the agenda. Commissioners, any other items for the good of the public? Seeing none, we are adjourned.